Good evening.
Welcome to the City Council Meeting for the City of Crescent City. Welcome, Mr. Hemmingson. Will you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Westfall.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Here.
Councilmember Slert.
Here.
And Mayor Shalton.
Here, thank you.
Mr. Burns, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please rise, salute, and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That sounded great.
Well, it's wonderful to see everybody here tonight. I want to welcome all of you and thank you for being here. For me, this signifies that Mr. Scott is very well-respected in the law enforcement realm here in the City of Crescent City, and that means a lot to this council and to our community, so thank you for being here tonight to support him. Before we move on, I would like to ask that we have a moment of silence in honor of Kristi Babich and her family. We have a young man here this evening that's being promoted to Lieutenant for this Crescent City Police Department, and we are all very proud of him. I feel he is someone that represents integrity and honesty, and is true to his community and his family, and we are very proud of him, and I'm very honored to call him my friend, Mr. Garrett Scott, if you would please come forward. And Mr. Douglas Plack, our Chief of Police.
Who's that? Honorable Crescent City Councilmembers, staff, and distinguished guests, thank you for all coming tonight and taking and finding time out of your busy schedule. For the past seven years, I've had the distinct privilege of serving as your Chief of Police for the Crescent City Police Department. During this tenure, I believe the department, and more importantly, the community, has benefited significantly through noteworthy changes, which were the result of a new vision and increased mission for the department. The department has enjoyed numerous accomplishments, such as establishing impressive K-9 units, enhancing the School Resource Officer position. We have also initiated and implemented a very successful program, such as the Crime-Free Multi-Housing Program, the Gang Resistant Education and Training Programs, Neighborhood Watch Program, and as well as the cadence before you, the Leadership Academy. In addition, we have partnered up with the First Five of Del Norte, as well as the Del Norte Child Care Council, as well as fostered numerous other positive relationships. Also of note, we now have three female officers, as well as our first Mung Officer, and we have enhanced and increased our Reserved Officer Program, all to better represent the diversity of this community. All of these efforts were done with the desire to create a cleaner, a healthier, and a happier community for our citizens, particularly our children, and for those who visit our beautiful city. Nevertheless, none of these changes and additions and enhancements could have or would have been possible without the direction and the latitude entrusted upon us by the City Council that sits before you today and the City Manager Rod Butler. These individuals have allowed me to be extremely versatile in my approach and focus in leading the department into the 21st century of law enforcement. A significant note is that the City Manager Rod Butler also created the Next Generation Leadership Group, which is comprised of incoming leaders that will take this city into the future. Today, we are meeting one of those leaders and filling the position of Lieutenant for the department, a position which has been vacant for seven years. In this position, this individual will be able to continue to lead a team, a unit, or a section of police employees in the delivery of police services, and ensure consistency is maintained with regard to the mission, the vision, and the values of the Crescent City Police Department, and our community-oriented policing and problem-solving philosophy for the years to come. This person will also have the responsibility and authority to assure that community concerns and the needs are identified, surveyed, researched, and addressed in a complete and timely manner, and that other department management staff pertinent to the City of Crescent City staff and the Crescent City members are kept informed where appropriate. The position of Lieutenant is a difficult role, and it has a lot of demands attached to it. While the demands of a Sergeant are high in the police department, the role of Lieutenant will even be more demanding. The candidate that will fill this role must be an individual that will insist on good, accurate analysis of problems, and that will hold the supervisors accountable for their proper actions. This individual must also protect subordinates from pressures within the department to revert back to the traditional method of incident-driven policing, allow subordinates the freedom to experiment with new approaches, manage problem-solving efforts over a long period of time, and not allow these efforts to die just because competing demands for time and attention sidetrack them. Most importantly, the Lieutenant must fully understand and support departmental philosophies, policies, and procedures, and always demonstrate a professional and command presence. Lastly, the individual must be above reproach and demonstrate high standards in both their personnel, as well as their professional life. When a decision was made to fill this position, we had to decide whether to conduct a nationwide search or conduct a process internally. For me, the decision was easy. In that, I wholeheartedly believe we had an individual already working for the department that has proven he had the work ethic, the drive, and the determination, as well as the loyalty to the city, and other required attributes, that he could fill all the responsibilities and demands necessary for the position. That individual was Sergeant Garrett Scott. Garrett, would you please join me up here on my left? As I stated previously, I'm very proud of all of our department's accomplishments during my tenure, but as your police chief, I find there is no greater satisfaction than being involved in mentoring and guiding an individual to reach its full potential. During the time I have known Sergeant Scott, he has continuously demonstrated to me that he has what it takes to be an effective, efficient manager and leader. His continual loyalty to you, the community, the personnel under his direction, the city, and myself has never wavered. I believe that after conducting the Lieutenant's process, Sergeant Scott was the only logical choice for the position. Further, I must say, he has got to be the most well-respected law enforcement officer in Del Norte County. Both before and after the process, I found it appeared that everyone I spoke with had the same opinion of him, whether it be in law enforcement agencies, the city and county employees, the attorneys, the judges, and most important, you, the citizens. Sergeant Scott definitely was the people's choice for Lieutenant. For those of you who do not know Garrett, he began his career with the Crescent City Police Department as an explorer at the young age of 14. When he was able to become a sworn peace officer, he was hired by the Ferndale Police Department. However, it was always his desire to come back home when the opportunity did arose, and he was eventually hired as an officer with the Crescent City Police Department on October 7, 1998. During his career here, he has been assigned as a patrol officer, school resource officer for Crescent Health, firearms instructor, and a field training officer. For the last seven years, he has shown his exemplary leadership skills in the position of Sergeant. During this time, he has successfully completed the Leadership in the Police Organization Curriculum from the prestigious United States Military Academy located in West Point, New York, and he has obtained his California Post Management Certificate just last week. He also continues to work on completing his college degree, all while balancing his full-time job with his roles of being a supportive husband to his wife Alyssa, and an attentive father to his new baby daughter Morgan. Based on all of the above, it is without reservation and with great pleasure that I swear him in as a new Lieutenant for the Crescent City Police Department. Garrett has requested that his wife Alyssa come up here and put a badge on him. Please come up here. Get ready. Raise your right hand. Aye, say your name.
Aye, Garrett Scott.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Police Lieutenant. Alyssa? To the honors, please. I think Garrett would like to say some things, but first, I'd like to see if the City Council would like to add a few words.
I'd be happy to, thank you. Lieutenant Scott, it's our pleasure to welcome you as our new Lieutenant, and the city, the community, is better because of it, and the public safety will be better because of your new position. Congratulations.
It's an honor, and thank you, and... She's speechless. Ms. Westfall?
It's been a real pleasure getting to know you, Garrett, and I'm just about ready for another ride-along.
All right.
Well, I've had the honor of knowing Garrett since our high school days at Sunset, which is, seems like yesterday, and it's an honor having seen you grow and mature as an excellent person, and I'm proud to have you represent and serve the citizenry of Crescent City, so thank you very much. Congratulations.
Well, I've known Garrett and his family for quite a few years, and I've always respected Garrett and know that he is someone we could depend on and trust, and I know he's going to be a great leader, but I love his family. They are the best, and I know you have a great support system, and I know you're going to do a great job, so thanks, and welcome, Lieutenant Scott.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say thanks for showing up and being supportive. I love you all. Good night. So, with any further ado, I would like to present to you for the very first time, Lieutenant Garrett Scott of the Crescent City Police Department. If you would like to go out into the hallway, I'm sure there's going to be plenty of photographs being taken, so if you would please like to go on outside and continue with congratulating him for his new position. Thank you.
Look at her, isn't she adorable?
Here's my deeney.
Bring her up here. Sweetheart, oh, you are prettier than your picture. Who's that?
Huh?
Adorable.
She's got my daddy.
Beautiful.
That's Marty. Yes. Hi.
Say hi.
Hi. I got the...
Little waves.
We got the waves.
Congratulations, hi, Garrett. You have the best daddy.
Yeah.
Now they all leave us. Mr. Apperson? Maybe you could bring your baby the next meeting. Cool stuff. Thank you. Well, we have another wonderful event taking place tonight. Well, wonderful for her, not so wonderful for the City of Crescent City, but we are wishing well our wonderful and extremely knowledgeable and best employee, Susie Mendez, our Housing Authority Director, who is moving on to retirement, and so we would like her to come forward, and actually, if the council would join me.
Well, I'm just disappointed that my audience left. I thought they were here for me. Yeah, I can always count on Richard, huh?
You're going to miss him, aren't you?
Yes.
So, on behalf of the City of Crescent City, we are extremely sad to see you go. You have been such an excellent employee, a good friend, great member of the team, always doing 110% of your job, and you've just made us all very proud, and although I hope you enjoy your retirement, I know that you're going to have big shoes to fill, and we just want to thank you for all your service to our city and our community, so. Says Susie Mendez, best wishes for a happy retirement, and we will miss you. So, this is for you.
Very nice, thank you. It's very nice. Thank you. I do want to say that, you know, as being the Director of the Housing Authority, it's been just great, especially with councils like you all, and a great city manager, a great council for the Housing Authority. You've been so supportive of me and my endeavors, and the Housing Authority and the low-income community, so I just want to say thank you. I appreciate it.
I remember all 100%. You've run the reviews.
Thanks.
As the mayor said, you have big shoes that you're leaving behind.
Thank you.
But thank you for serving.
Thank you.
Don't be afraid here. Who took my agenda?
Mr. Mendez, I hope that you enjoy having your wife at home. Good. You're better.
Madam Mayor. I'd just remind you that Chief Plack is still here, and he has some handcuffs, so maybe it's not too late.
To keep her here or for her retirement?
Keep her here.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just add along those lines of the succession plan, that one of the many examples of Susie's excellent management skill is the fact that a year or more ago, she started kind of planning for her retirement and investing a lot of time and mentoring and energy into Megan Miller, who is with us tonight, and Megan has agreed for about a six-month acting interim assignment to assume the role of Housing Authority Director, and that's going to give her a chance to decide, is this really what she wants to do? And of course, we'll be evaluating her during that time as well, but that's been a great... We're excited to have her willing to do that, and so there'll be a seamless transition. Susie will be available to us on a consulting basis during that period of time, and we'll continue to work with Megan, but we're excited to have someone coming up through the ranks that will be in that interim role for six months, and then probably beyond that as well, so I wanted to just make that announcement tonight.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. I know that Susie's said nothing but really good things about Megan, and I know that my interactions with Megan have been very good and positive, and we're looking forward to watching you fill those shoes.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I have other big shoes to fill, but I'm here for the best.
Good. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to our consent calendar, which includes several things: approval of the regular minutes of June 7, the warrant claims of June 8 through the 21st, bi-weekly payroll reports, June 5, paid June 11, approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Crescent City and the Crescent City Management Employees Association for the period of July 1, 2010, through June 30, 2012. We're also approving the resolution that makes that contract effective, receiving and filing our April 2010 general ledger, and approving Resolution 2010-15, which is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, selecting the annual adjustments factor for the calculation of the 2010-11 appropriations limit for the City of Crescent City. Is there any public comment on that? Okay, seeing none, if you could please pull the vote.
I don't need the motion.
Oh, yes. I'm skipping, moving forward.
You're going to make this a really...
There's too much good stuff.
Really quick meeting. I'll move that we then adopt the consent calendar items four through nine. It's catchy.
I'll second that, but I think there's three or four corrections I've identified.
Absolutely. On the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
On page five, about the middle of the page, it indicates it is his understanding that she has been harassing city workers, and it has a letter H, and I think it should be the word "he wants." It was Mr. Miles was speaking. Okay, and then on page nine, about a third of the way up, or a quarter of the way up from the bottom of the page, it's talking about Councilmember Slert asked if Proposal Number 32 as base is adequate, and I think there was a misunderstanding there. The question I was asking was, is the base for the roadwork adequate? Because Proposal 32 was with regards to removing the top of the paving.
Correct.
And then on page 10, this second to bottom paragraph, it talks about a motion being approved and seconded by council member, question mark.
Sure that she can go back to those minutes and put in the correct person?
Certainly. And then on page 13, about the third line from the top, says he would like to seriously consider, it says, "at the next fire council meeting," and actually, I was offering that we consider ASAP, instead of waiting till the next fire council joint meeting, the notion of the city starting to charge for the plan and review by Chief Wakefield. That's all I have.
I have one minor correction for the minutes, and that would be at the top of page two, and that would be the spelling of our new reporter's last name. It's H-A-N-S-E-N, is that correct?
Could you say that again? I didn't hear the spell.
H-A-N-S-E-N.
Thank you. Anybody else?
All in my motion.
I think all of those corrections are accurate as well, so... Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Westfall.
Yes.
Councilmember Burns.
Yes.
Councilmember Murray.
Yes.
Councilmember Slert.
Yes.
And Mayor Shalton.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor, now might be, so we don't forget, a good time to report out in closed session.
Oh, thank you. See, I get... I love doing all the positive stuff.
We had a closed session prior to this meeting, and Mr. Plack, could you please report out any final actions taken?
Yes, Mayor, no final actions were taken in closed session.
He just wants to get paid tonight. Thank you for the reminder.
No report, no check.
I might forget more often. Okay, we are going to adjourn to... I think I'll maybe make her wait till the end of the meeting. Adjourn to the Crescent City Housing Authority. Please note that all five directors are here, and Susie, before I have you give your final report, I'm going to ask for any public comment. Is there any public comment, Mr. Miles?
That's my last one.
I'd like to make a suggestion on a way that we can honor Susie and benefit improving tenant and landlord relations in the future, that I believe we should create within the Housing Authority a system of mediation when tenants have complaints that could easily be solved in the mitigation process, because I think the need is here, and I think it's about time that my Housing Authority becomes involved in assisting tenant and landlord relations. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Okay, we have a consent calendar tonight, approval of the meeting minutes on May 17, and the warrant claims for May 18 through June 21.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero. Your last report.
My last report. I don't really have a lot to say tonight, except that the Housing Authority is doing very well. Passing it on to someone else is great satisfaction for me, but it's been, you know, a great, great use of my talents and my time, and it's kind of sad, but also happy, going on to do something else. But the Housing Authority is in, you know, really good condition, both physically and financially, and, you know, our staff, we have a great staff, and, you know, they're doing really good care with Rod. It takes a great... doing really good care with RDA, it takes a great interest in us and, you know, leads us really well. So, you know, the Housing Authority is in really good shape, and the waiting list is, we're taking some people off right now because we're trying to fill some slots that we had open, so that's kind of exciting. The waiting list is approximately 300 people on the waitlist, we've taken two draws down lately, so the Housing Authority is in really good shape in all aspects, so, and again, thank you guys for your support for the Housing Authority. I may be back at some point, but, you know, officially as a housing director, this is my last time, so.
So what are you going to do with all your free time?
Well, most of my family lives in Arizona, so I'm going to be going there and spending some time with my mother. She's getting older, and we're going to go on a road trip, so that should be fun.
Oh, fun.
Yeah, and my husband's going to be retiring in about seven months, so he'll join me at that point, so we will probably be moving from Crescent City to be closer to my family, so.
Good for you.
Anyway, so unless you have some questions.
I was going to have to go over all the items that were used on the last evaluation for the Housing Authority briefly, but I-
I have to name all 14 indicators?
But, no, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, never mind.
The fact that she knows there's 14 indicators is very impressive to me.
Actually, we had another audit for our VMS, it's a certain program, just a couple of weeks ago had sent out an auditor, and we did very well on that audit also, so it's a whole different program, but it's a new program that we've been doing for the last two or three years, I guess, and we fared well on that, too, so. So that was one little area that I was kind of concerned about, was called the VMS system, it's a voucher management system, and we go in and report on a monthly basis all of our money and that sort of thing, how much we've spent, how many units have been occupied and that sort of thing, and so it was kind, I mean, I went kind of like, oh my goodness, an audit right before I'm leaving, but it was really a good thing, and we had a lady come down from San Francisco, and she stayed about four days, and it was real good, she was excellent, and we had two little errors-
It's probably a good learning tool for Megan, too.
Yeah, it was. We had two errors but no findings, so.
Excellent. Well, travel safely.
I just wanted to make a comment that I've known Susie for years, working in different programs and whatnot, and it takes a special person to oversee the Housing Authority as a whole, and so she's had a great tone for the people who utilize the Housing Authority, and I greatly appreciate how you served the people in the community and it really missed it, so.
Thanks.
It really made a difference.
I think everybody just wants to be, you know, validated and respected, and we have that whole tone within the Housing Authority, and I know I leave it in great, great hands, that will go forth.
You do, and, yeah, you have great staff, and so I have great faith in them, and it's just, we're sorry to see you go. So, thank you, Susie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we'll accept your final Housing Authority report. We have no public hearings or continuing our new business this evening, so we will adjourn, and adjourn to the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency.
But you're welcome to stay. She laughs.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks. Okay, please note that all five directors are here, and is there any public comment on RDA? Mr. Miles?
I want to thank whoever prepared the 360-something-page report to you people tonight. It's one of the better reports that I have ever read that the city has done, and I hope it won't collect the famous dust that a lot of reports do, but I do have a concern, and I would like to invite you, Kelly, sometime this week, on a little walk-alaw, and I'll tell you why I think it's important, that maybe this invitation to you is important, because it is about our redevelopment area. This week, I think it's Thursday, bid first farmers market downtown in the Fountain Area. Also, this weekend, my bid people will be cleaning up my downtown. Long overdue. But what saddens me, the other day, I was riding my bike through what I call the no-man's land at Price and Mason Mall. It's a shame that the ARC community did an excellent job painting some signs, but in one area where these signs were redone, there's a weed patch to disgrace. Today, my city workers went down there and did some mowing. They couldn't clean it all because the Fourth of July is coming up. I think there's a need, and I didn't see it in this plan, that my redevelopment agency needs to hire a maintenance person to assist in keeping our redevelopment areas and some of the properties that are within our redevelopment areas, like our police department or housing office, maintained and upkeep. For some reason, and this statement isn't for Donna's benefit, when you walk by our housing department, there's a wall, and there's algae growing on it, and it needs a paint shop.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to our consent calendar for the minutes of May 17th and warrant claims May 18th through the 21st.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. No executive directors report this evening?
That's correct.
Okay. Anything from our redevelopment agency that you'd like to discuss? Okay.
I actually think that it was a good recommendation on Mr. Miles' part that perhaps RDA could participate in helping our city staff clean up downtown. Since they're a big part, RDA 1 and RDA 2 is a big part of downtown, it makes sense that maybe it would have a participant working along with the city.
Can you use RDA funds to pay for a staff position?
Yeah, that's going to be the biggest question that I'll clarify. You used to be able to, you had a lot of latitude in terms of staffing, use of RDA funds for staffing, I'm not sure that that's any longer true for basic maintenance. We can do major facility improvements on public facilities within project areas, but as far as, you know, having a maintenance person paid for with RDA money, that's something that I will double-check if it's possible, it may not be a bad idea for us to supplement our general fund staff.
Okay, I'll look into that. Okay, number three, consider and approve a master services agreement between the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency and Pacific Municipal Consultants for Redevelopment and Financial Advisory Services. Mr. Butler?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the agency board. This is kind of an exciting moment for me, I think we've been talking for several months now about moving forward on an analysis of our redevelopment agency in terms of its financial condition, its bonding capacity, developing a new five-year implementation plan, and part of that process has been the evaluation of consulting firms to help us with that work. The city really has not, the agency has really not had a regular consulting firm on board for several years now. What I did was to develop kind of a laundry list of what we need to accomplish, and that's included on page two of your report. I want to go through that list just real quickly. First and foremost and priority is the preparation of a new five-year redevelopment implementation plan, that's required by law for our agency every five years, and we're just coming up on the end of our current five-year plan, and the council and the community will have a chance to provide input on that as it goes forward. We will be convening public workshops with the City Council of Redevelopment Agency Board to provide an overview of the redevelopment process and to discuss the potential uses of redevelopment money and housing set-aside funds, and I think you're all aware that Monday, July 26th has been established as the date for that first workshop, and I think everyone except Mr. Burns was able to buy into that, so that is scheduled and booked. We're going to be looking at the pros and cons of merging our two existing redevelopment project areas. I think you're all aware that we currently have two, RDA 1 and RDA 2, and there may be a lot of advantages to us to merge those two areas, so we need some professional consulting assistance to help us look at the advantages of that and make some good recommendations to the agency board. We're going to conduct a financial presentation on how redevelopment funds may be used, that's kind of similar to workshop number, or item number two of the workshop, and if there's a desire for a further follow-up workshop, we'll get that scheduled. We want to complete a five-to-10-year financial plan for the redevelopment agency. We want to take a hard look at our low- and moderate-income housing set-aside funds, I think the board is aware that we have a nice amount of money sitting in that account currently, and we're adding about $200,000 a year to that fund, and the council's expressed an interest in learning more about how those funds can be used and kind of deciding what the best priorities, highest priorities are and best uses are for Crescent City. We need someone from time to time to help us with economic analysis of owner participation agreements and disposition and development agreements that are related to redevelopment projects. We want some professional assistants as well in helping us decide the best structure and terms for the loan that the agency approved a couple of years ago to finance the rehab of the Fred Endert Municipal Pool. Those funds came from the Water Fund and were loaned to RDA Project Area 2, and so we're looking at the best way to structure the repayment plan to ensure that that money gets back to the Water Fund, but that it also, that that payment process doesn't paralyze the ability of RDA Project Area 2 to continue to do new effective projects. And then we'll have, as the years go forward, the need for economic analysis and planning services on specific development proposals, and I listed in the staff report things, for example, it's the Hampton Inn Phase 2, redevelopment of the Surt Site Grill property, Randy Bach, of course, the Norte project, downtown revitalization, folks that can come in and take a look at specific proposals, help us analyze the pro formas for those, and give the agency board wise advice in terms of, you know, what's in the agency's best interest on specific development proposals. So those are kind of nine overall tasks that we see ourselves needing some assistance with, and I took a look at several firms. The concern that I had in evaluating firms for the redevelopment agency are that a lot of them are based in the big urban areas, and they kind of come from a perspective that, you know, might work for Sacramento or suburban Sacramento or LA or Orange County. We have a very different situation here on the North Coast and in Crescent City in terms of our economy, our real estate situation, the size of our community, our population, our demographics, so I wanted to make sure that we had someone, that we're dealing with a firm that has really done some legitimate work in smaller communities, rural areas, North Coast areas, and what I came up with was Pacific Municipal Consultants, which has a number of offices throughout California, most of the people that we'll be dealing with are based out of the Davis office, but they have done, if you had a chance to look through the proposal that they put together, they have done work in a lot of smaller communities in California, including North State region. That's kind of what tipped the balance for me in terms of recommending them, and I think you're aware that they have been of assistance to us over this last year and a half on the Housing Element project that we'll be talking about a little later this evening, and on some contract staffing of our planning department support there, and we've, so far, been very pleased with the work that they've done for us. The good thing about consulting contracts is if it isn't working out, if the fit's not working, or the, you know, the bills are getting out of hand, or the work product is not there, you can say goodbye with a termination letter, so we'll certainly be holding their feet to the fire in terms of their performance standards, but we're excited about being able to turn them loose on this project, and the first big specific project, like I mentioned, is the five-year redevelopment implementation plan. So with that, I'm recommending that the council authorize me in my RDA executive director role to execute a master services agreement with Pacific Municipal Consultants, and that those services would be consistent with the proposal that they prepared for us that was included in your agenda package. And I'm available to take any questions you have. Also, the gentleman on the front row there is Brian Millar from PMC. Brian is not the team leader of the RDA project, but he will be involved in the team, will be working with us on redevelopment-related issues, and he is also be able to answer questions that you may have about their firm or their expertise.
Okay. Initially, I'd like to, Mr. Burns pointed out to me, item number three, we believe you're talking about Elk Valley Corridor?
Yeah, and I noticed in the one PMC document they had, they called it the Oak Valley Corridor, and I corrected that in my staff report, it's the Elk Valley Corridor.
Okay. And then just not about this specific contract, but isn't the Hampton Inn under some kind of an agreement with the city that they had so many years, was it six years or 10 years to move forward, and where are we with that?
Yeah, that is true, they need to either build Phase 2 or make a substantial payment back to the redevelopment agency fund. I have had at least two meetings with the owner, Mr. XJ Yuan, during the time that I've been up here, he's aware, he's very much aware of that clause. I believe it's 2015, 14 or 15 is kind of the have the thing built by then date, and one of the specific things that I talked to these firms that I interviewed about was helping us to make sure that we understand what that clause meant, and how do we best move forward in making that happen, and working with XJ if it is his desire to go ahead and build that Phase 2, if that's his plan, if not, we need to make it clear that that payment has to come back into the RDA as the agreement requires. So, yeah, that's definitely true, that's there, and, you know, now that we're into 2010, we're within a timeframe, we're getting close.
Any questions from the council?
Well, I just noticed in the PMC packet here that 2010 schedule, then noticed to proceed in the kickoff meeting, we're kind of being unfair because it says April.
Yeah. Brian will be glad to know that that would all-
How much have you got done so far?
If the agency board approves it tonight, will, you know, that new kickoff date becomes, you know, board approval, June 21st.
All right, so that wouldn't be very fair to them if we're like, yeah, well, you haven't gotten anything done yet.
So am I correct in reading the schedule that it's, I mean, I just did a quick math in my head, about $60,000?
Actually, for the first project, which is the five-year plan, five-year implementation plan, I think it was only 28 and change.
Right.
Do the totals run down and across?
Oh, this is just, yeah, I was-
There's one part of the proposal where it's stated a little more easier to read format.
I was adding all the bottom totals, so.
Yeah, page 4-5 is a nice kind of condensed version of all that. Yeah, page four dash five is a nice kind of condensed version of all that. Just under $29,000 as a maximum for that part of the project. And some of the other nine tasks will be either completed or partially completed through that first task, that redevelopment implementation plan. In other words, they, they will be gathering and producing information that will help us complete the other tasks as they do that task one. So in other words, I don't see it going anywhere near $60,000, certainly in the first fiscal year.
Yeah, I was adding all those bottom numbers up, so I was wrong.
Okay, that's right.
They totaled 28, okay, and...
And by the way, that's all, I'm going to state in the obvious here, but this is all redevelopment agency money and all legitimate expenditure of funds, so there's no general fund cost.
I was just going to ask if the 7,500 for housing-related issues will come from the housing authority?
No, probably the low-mont set-aside fund, if it's eligible, that it would come from that fund rather than Suzie's fund.
Okay, so the 20%.
That's right, 20% set-aside.
Any other questions from the council?
A couple of comments. I, I thought the PMC proposal was very thorough, and it seems like a very good fit for our community. And I think in the end, this effort spending these RDA funds will help the RDA ultimately realize its maximum benefit. So I think it's a very positive thing.
We were talking about signatures, based on our conversations earlier, mayor versus city manager.
Oh, yeah.
Is that something we want to change, or are we okay to proceed?
No, I think your, the agenda reflects that the city managers will be authorized to sign, if I remember correctly, and that's, that is acceptable under your ordinance. I, I do have a question, though. We don't have a contract yet, is that right, Rod?
No, we have, today I got an updated, we've actually got a, a 2009 master services agreement that I entered into for the Housing Element project and the contract staffing proposal. I asked them to give us an updated 2010 version reflecting this redevelopment work as well. I wasn't, we weren't able to pull all that together in time to get into the agenda packet, but my recommendation would be if you can direct, authorize me to work with the city attorney to have that completed, we'll go ahead and have, assuming that the city attorney approves it as to form, I would go ahead and execute that master services agreement, which would cover their wrap-up of the housing element, this redevelopment project work, and any contract planning, staffing as well, all in one, one umbrella agreement. And I think as long as we're under $50,000 a year, which is what the purchasing ordinance says, I can do that as city manager. And I, I wanted to bring this to you as an agency board to make sure that you were on board with that direction.
Let me just process this for a second and make sure I've got it clear in my head. We're actually, I thought we were adopting the resolution for the housing element this evening. So if we're doing that, then why are we paying more money to wrap up the housing element?
The only, yeah, the only thing that I can think of would be that there are...
It's not separate if it's going to be in the same contract.
Yeah, there's the final submittal of, after you, assuming that the council approves the housing element tonight, there is some very minor packaging of all the information and then submitting that back to state HCD that has to go on and that PMC will be doing. So, I mean, that could all be done under the 2009 master services agreement. So it's, you know, there's, there's an agreement in place to do that now.
So is there really a need to combine that with the RDA contract?
Probably not.
Okay.
Yeah.
So how much more of a financial impact will the housing authority contract be?
$1,000 or less.
I think it should stay under the same contract, personally.
That's fine.
How does the rest of the council feel?
One, one question, does it have to be done in this fiscal year? Is that one of the issues, to have it done by July 1st, June 30th?
The housing element submittal? Yes, we're going to actually submit all of that, as again, assuming the council approves it tonight. We're going to submit all that on Thursday. I think it's the commitment we've made to the HCD.
Okay, so that was my question, and then honestly, the other part of this, the agreement with PMC can be done, does that have to be done now or can it wait till July 5th?
Oh, on the actual master services agreement?
Because I have a little bit of concern about separating them out because this is RDA.
What do you mean by that?
Because this is RDA, it's, and we have, have to be separate because it's RDA.
Can you tell me what you mean by that? We have to be separate?
I think what she's saying is that the services in question, some of them would be general fund, general planning services, and some of them would be RDA. And so putting them together in the same agreement is, you know, has the potential for a little bit of confusion. I don't think there's anything wrong with it, I think it's okay.
It's okay?
Yeah.
That's what I was...
Call it a master services agreement with the city and PMC and the RDA.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure we got...
I...
We could, we could certainly bring that all back, which is maybe what, what Mr. Burns is suggesting at July 6th, once Mr. Black has reviewed the master services agreement, you know.
I was just for the contractor to, to, to bring it back.
Here's what I believe is, if it's within the purchasing agent's authority, which is $50,000, then you're in a position to approve it conceptually tonight and authorize the city manager to sign it, subject to the approval of, of the city attorney. If it's in excess of $50,000, the better practice would be to bring it back on your agenda and actually approve the actual agreement. I'm not saying that doing it the other way wouldn't work, but it's probably just best practice.
Yes, I want to be even more clear in my mind. The first task is going to be about $28,000, $29,000, but that's the only proposal we have?
No, because I taught, I reviewed and interviewed and talked to other firms.
No, 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 I mean, you had 13, was it 13, where am I at?
Oh, like nine...
Two of the tasks, is this...
Yeah, yeah, they proposed on nine different tasks, which is what I gave them, each of the people that I talked to. And so your question may be, would, would there be additional costs for those additional tasks? And the answer to that would be yes. Some of that would be, you know, estimated at the beginning, let's say we get a proposal from XJ to move forward on Phase Two, and it's going to require some real estate expertise and hotel development expertise.
Sure.
We would go to PMC and say, here's what we need, how many hours will it take, at what hourly rate, and then that becomes a, a separate task. I think if it was a number that was going to push us anywhere near $50,000 total, I would bring that back to the agency board. If it was $2,000 or $3,000, that would probably just...
But EMC's agreement, their nine issues, their, their nine, their scope of work addresses the nine issues that you put out in your request. So, so this scope of work, and you reviewed them in your report, that's covered under the 28-plus thousand?
No, that's not what I'm hearing him say.
Just the housing element and the...
Yeah, just the...
Just the housing, just number one.
The five-year implementation plan.
Okay.
So that's, I guess that's why I'm confused. It's like I see a master's agreement is, here's the master agreement, here are all the tasks, here's the estimate for each task, and that's what we approve.
Only problem, I, I understand that, the only problem with that is, a lot, for a lot of these, you know, six, seven, eight, nine tasks, it's all going to depend on, on stuff that we don't know could happen come down the road. Let's say, you know, Target approaches us, this would be like the city manager's dream, but Target kind of approaches us and says, we want to build a superstore on Highway 101, but, you know, we want you to give us the land, or, you know, help us somehow, give us a sales tax rebate for the first five years.
Right.
We want PMC to help us analyze, does that make sense for us? You know, we, we all hope something like that happens, but we don't know right now that it's going to, so it's impossible for them to price that now.
Right, I understand. I think I would feel more comfortable if each task were brought back to the council for approval for the budget. Because I don't want to see us authorizing you to, you know, spend up to $50,000 for every single task and us not be aware of that.
Yeah, no, I think at the most, what in my mind you would be authorizing me tonight to do would be to go to $50,000 for PMC for redevelopment services in this next fiscal But I don't, I have no problem.
But that would, but that would maybe only cover like maybe two or three tasks, right?
Yeah, depending on the complexity of the other tasks.
Because I think, I mean, I see some of these in here that I think are very important.
Sure.
That need to be done right away.
Brian, do you want to address any of that?
When I'm done talking, thank you. So you, you're, you think that there's only a few things here that you will need to accomplish in this next fiscal year that will only cost up to $50,000?
28.
Yeah, right, the 28, the biggest thing right now is that five-year implementation plan, and that's the 28. And what I was trying, what I was mumbling about earlier was, a lot of the work that they are doing as part of this five-year plan is going to pull together data, for example, you've heard me before talking about, we want to get a sense of what our bonding capacity is.
Right.
A lot of this information that they're pulling together for the, for the five-year plan will give them the information they need to give us that figure. And another key thing we want to look at right from the beginning is, does it make sense for us to merge the two project areas? A lot of that work that they're doing for the five-year implementation plan will...
Cover that.
Cover that, yeah, so I know it's tricky.
But what about, I know that for me, the financial plan is important. I think that's something this council is wanting to address this fiscal year. The other thing that I think is important is the, the loan of the city pool money back to the water fund. When is, I'm, when is that loan supposed to begin, the repayment?
This, this coming fiscal year, 2010, 2011 is my understanding.
Mm-hmm, so that's something, I, see where I'm going?
Sure.
So I think maybe we should prioritize some things and have those proposals put into the master's agreement if we plan on completing those in this next year.
Yeah, well, and I think the, the master, the way they structured it, I think it makes a lot of sense because the master services agreement would include this entire scope of work, including the nine tasks and the ones that you just mentioned, so...
With a, with an estimate?
Well, there's an estimate on the five-year implementation plan, yeah.
Task one. Okay, we're not really going down the same road. Sir?
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for being here.
Brian Millar with PMC, address is 1560 Drew Avenue, Suite 120 in Davis. Just to add a little bit to what the city manager indicated, the, the scope of work that you have tonight and the budget is reflective of, of the redevelopment implementation plan. Beyond that, what we had discussed was that there's, there's an awful lot in terms of other work tasks here, and what we would do is sit down with the city manager's office and other city staff as appropriate, and add a bit more detail to what you see here in the proposal for those other work tasks, just so we can ensure what it is that we're trying to deliver to the city, and also come up with a budget that, that makes sense, that's doable. I don't know exactly where, if I had to guess at this point where those other eight tasks might land, it's hard to say, as, as the city manager indicated, some of these are, are based on future projects that haven't arrived yet. And so there's other items where we can tailor the scope of work. If we're targeting a particular budget or number, that's something we can do, we just make sure that the product that we deliver is still something that the city wants to see. So there's a lot of flexibility within that. The other thing I'll mention that I think came up too is that some of the work tasks that, that are going through the different, different projects that we have been doing and through the redevelopment work, will also find a home in some of these later work tasks, so there's no duplication of effort, and I think you'll see some cost savings as part of that as well.
Any other input on how you'd like to see this move forward?
I would think that we could look at task one, and it seems to be the engine that starts everything and brings a lot of issues out. So if we focused on that and directed city manager to execute that part of the contract, I mean, I don't think that I'm understanding that all of the other eight or seven issues are going to be another $28,000 each. I'm not understanding that at all. And I, I think what's, what I'm understanding is the five-year plan will ferret out a whole series of issues that then with Mr. Butler's direction and, and making presentations to us, we'll be able to prioritize accordingly and, and then execute the agreement for those scopes of work.
It's a little discombobulated in my mind.
Mine too.
It could be better just to say, you know, in my mind, not have all nine if that's not what we're doing right now, just, this is what we're doing right now. Spending $28,000 to prepare a five-year study, which will sort out these other issues in some sort of order, plus add new ones, I'm assuming as it, as they come up. Is that right? I mean, is it that simple, or...
I think we could do it that way, and that's certainly the most important thing that we get started on is the, the five-year plan.
I think you just have a plan here with a lot of unknowns, and so it's hard to approve.
What if you, the, the agreement itself, it hasn't really yet been finalized, and so why don't we include in the agreement a green light on the five-year plan and the $28,000 estimated budget? And then the remaining items will be brought back to the city council for authorization when estimates, when those are ready to be performed and estimates are available for you to look at. We'll just, we'll still have just one agreement, but we'll have a, an approval process whereby...
I'm, I'm good with that, I feel better about that, but there are other things in here I think we need to accomplish, that I don't see us sitting around waiting for the five-year plan to get done. I think the financial analysis is imperative that we get done this year.
One and five, I circled both those myself.
I wasn't saying that, I wasn't implying that you'd wait until one was done before beginning anything else, it's just, they would be encompassed in the agreement, but the city council would give the authorization to go ahead on those, and presumably you'd have some, some kind of number when you gave that authorization.
See, I see us putting together our five-year review, coming up with the, the financial analysis, and from that analysis, you're going to, then you're going to move forward into having your public meetings, you know, and involving the council and making some decisions and priorities for the RDA. And then also immediately, I think the loan repayment is something that we should definitely, if we have to start paying it back next month, that needs to be figured out. And so I see one, five, and eight as being something that we need to have budgets on and, and, you know, obviously we have one for number one, but...
On, on the timeline, if you look at the five-year implementation, it goes from now till...
Basically six months.
Six months to, for completion. Is that a, till August of 15th?
That, that was starting April though.
Right. So you're going September, October now, approximately.
Yeah.
So that's going to be the kickoff and implementation of the, of the five-year plan. So essentially after that, we have the plan, and then we can add and prioritize, do that. Is that what? Sure? That's my feeling.
But a big, but a big piece of that is housing in, in this timeline.
Yeah, and housing is part of the overall five-year implementation plan.
For RDA?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we can't.
So how do we, how do we come up with that plan without a financial analysis? Just, just talk to me and tell me, because I don't know.
Well, that's what I was trying to get at earlier, that, that they are going to be doing financial analysis as part of the implementation plan, developing that five-year plan. And, and I think part of the confusion is, I gave them a list of things that was these nine separate tasks that just kind of came to my mind as things that we needed to get done. I, I don't think, and Brian, jump up if I'm selling you guys down the river, but I think that there's no way they can do the five-year implementation plan effectively without doing financial analysis that will go out, you know, at least during that five-year planning frame, timeframe. And I think we'll probably come out of that five-year implementation plan even with our bonding capacity number. In fact, I think I remember from reading the detail of the proposal that Mr. Bandi, Tom Bandi, who's their, the lead financial RDA expert on the team, says that they will, part of that first implementation, five-year implementation plan task will yield the bonding figure, bonding capacity figure.
Right, but we don't even have a plan for RDA. We don't know how much money we have. We don't know what we can do with that money. We don't know what our priorities are. We have a list of things that came out of a town hall meeting that's still sitting on a list. You know, we haven't had the RDA workshop to educate the council about RDA, so I'm just having a hard time envisioning all of this without having all of those other things.
I think the plan will address those other things.
I don't see it on here.
What if you just, what if you authorize the city manager to sign the agreement and to move ahead in an orderly fashion on all these tasks not to exceed a number, 40,000, without returning to the council with more detailed information, something like that? And that way you get to, you know, you begin on the five-year plan, you begin on the financial analysis, you begin, you know, in a, in a, in a logical way.
And I wouldn't even mind a report twice a month to, to start. We don't have to wait just once, once a month. Just give us a oral update in July 5th at our next meeting. Where are we now with this agreement and with, because I think what we got into, we listed nine things and we thought those were.
Yeah. I think part of what I hear you saying is you only have an estimate on what one of those things is going to cost you, but as you look at the list, you're seeing some very important priorities that you want to move forward on, but you don't have the cost estimate yet. And if you, if you just put a not to exceed number, then that enables the whole process to begin and probably enables some very more refined cost estimates as well.
Well, and is number two, is that, is that our RDA workshop that we've been?
Yeah, that's the July 26th workshop that we agreed to, yeah.
How much is that?
I don't know that we have a separate number for that yet.
But if we're going to have it in July, and they're going to be a part of it, then that needs to be included in the agreement.
But I think Mr. Black's approach would, would take care of that, because you'd be authorizing me up to a not to exceed limit tonight.
I think, I think, Madam Mayor, what you're, the point you're making is that it's not a consecutive approach. It's a paralleling, multiple paralleling investigations, and, and they need to be done simultaneously. I think maybe the pool, the financial in the five-year plan to be moving things forward. And so if, if we could direct Mr. Butler to do it within that $40,000 range and then come back to the council with the, the ongoing work and/or costs associated therewith.
Well, I'm okay with going up to his $50,000 limit. I just want to know what he's doing and what he's spending the money on and what, how we're getting to that end vision of, we've all been sitting here for years now not knowing anything about our RDA, and we haven't educated this council a lot. And we're, we've had these low to moderate housing set aside projects that just keep lingering and coming and going and never happening, and you know, there's just so much that we've, we need to know. And if this is going to answer all those questions, great, but it's very confusing, and it doesn't really explain to me how it's going to do that, so. That being said.
I think part of the process, when we do the plan, will help answer some of those questions.
Yeah, I'm hoping so. Okay. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none?
I move that we approve a master services agreement with civic municipal consultants to provide redevelopment consulting services to our city and RDA, not, in, in the agreement not to exceed $40,000.
I'll second that.
Okay, could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Uh, yes.
And Mayor Shalon?
Yes, thank you.
And the reason I'm so passionate about this tonight and really wanting to understand is because the city has really made some successful strides in the last two years. We've really got our financial records in order. We have a great leadership team, you know, we have a council that's trying to work together for the most part, and now we want to start doing some things to make our city a better place to live. And that's where I see RDA really getting involved and, and helping us make that happen, and so I want it all.
Sure.
So, thank you.
That's fine.
I need to express myself regarding the grants.
Oh, okay. The, oh, because of the RHS?
Yeah.
Okay. Are we?
That motion for Mr. Burns was for 40,000, correct?
Correct. Four zero comma zero 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 dot zero zero.
Okay, we are adjourning as the RDA. Thank you for being here this evening. And reconvening as the city council and moving on to public hearings. Item number 12 is a public hearing for fiscal year 2010, 2011, community development block grants, and you are just in time.
I do have a presentation card. It's somewhat like we'd like to explain the council's.
Charlene? Actually, we've scheduled that for new business back toward the end, but it's up to the council's discretion if they want to hear that.
Um.
Do that now or?
Let's see.
Like it's number?
How long is the presentation? It's the council's pleasure. Do you want a half-hour presentation?
An hour later.
We don't do well with half-hour presentations. I, it's up to the council.
You're the mayor.
Well, I'm interested. Well, if we're going to do it, 30 minutes?
I don't know for sure. I ran through it once and I didn't have any time. It's going through all of the different allocations.
Mr. Butler, I'll let you make the decision. Is this something this council that you want her to?
What about workshopping it?
Workshopping it?
In, probably not July, because we've already got the redevelopment workshop, but basically setting up a 60-minute, you know, we, we got through that last workshop on general plan within an hour. You were gone, but Mr. Burns with his skill, you know, got us through in, in exactly an hour. So maybe we set up a, a CDBG overview workshop.
When we can concentrate on one item, it's really helpful.
Yeah, we weren't, we weren't told we were going to have a 30-minute presentation. That's okay. Is it something that you feel is, I mean, is there an executive summary you can give us that you, do you feel it's important in our decision-making process tonight?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'd like a workshop then, where we could just set aside an hour.
Sure.
Set aside an hour.
Yeah. Maybe we can, if we don't have any closed session items, maybe one night we could do it at 5:00.
Is that wishful thinking, no closed session items?
Well, we did talk about striking a few of them off. Okay, so let's move forward.
Mayor, if you don't mind, on item 12A, I want to point out that I am a member of the CASA Board of Directors.
Yes.
And I haven't been asked and I haven't offered to provide any legal advice in respect to item 12A, and I won't be. On the other hand, I don't think I'm just an unpaid board member, so I don't think I need to leave the room or anything like that, so.
You'll get no vote tonight?
Right.
Charlene? Oh, she, she, you did. It is all about babies tonight.
See, cute. The first two, he was about six weeks old, and the one with the cake, we were going home that day, he was about five months.
You were in the hospital with him for five months? Oh my gosh, it didn't seem that long. Probably did to you.
It did, but you know, since we've been home, it's like he's been with us forever, and it seems weird that we still haven't been home with him as long as we were in the hospital, so. August is going to be a milestone. We'll be home longer than we were in the hospital.
Look at those cheeks, he's healthy now.
He is, he's, we got weighed, he's 15 pounds.
Wow.
So he's a little chunk.
Congratulations.
Wonderful.
Okay, so the item that we're talking about tonight is the annual allocation for the, the application for the CDBG general allocation grant. This is one component of the overall CDBG program, and this is the one that funds public services, public works, and housing projects. Those are all eligible types of activities that can be funded with this allocation. For this particular allocation, there is an $800,000 limit, but there is a $400,000 limit on any one project or program, and they consider all public services lumped together to be one program. So we are limited to $400,000 for all public services. We could apply for another $400,000 for another project like housing rehabilitation loans or something other than public services, but there wasn't anything that we're really prepared to move forward with, so that's why there's only a $400,000 application before you tonight.
We have no public works projects that we can move forward with, Mr. Butler?
To be honest with you, I don't know that we even got that far of looking into that option this year. I think the focus was on getting back on the joint project, or the joint application process trail with the city and county on the public services, and I don't have a good answer for you as far as, you know, I don't, I don't even know what, I know in the past we've used funds on the wastewater treatment plant project. I'm not sure what else we could have used those funds for this year, but we can certainly look.
Mr. Weir, don't you have a list of public works projects that are waiting to be funded?
We don't have some projects out there, but I don't know.
You think Front Street might use any money?
Well, let me, let me tell you about public works projects. Part of the issue that has happened in the past is, is the, the balance between competitive and eligible. Because the city of Crescent City has a calculated targeted income group percentage of over 51%, any public works project in the city would be eligible for funding. But in order to be competitive, projects have to be at least 95% TIG benefit. So what happens is if you start trying to put public works projects into your application, you lose points, and TIG benefit is the single largest number of points available. And that is the reason that you lost the grant in 2008, is because you only got 186 points for TIG benefit out of a possible 300. So if there's-
Right, after they told us to apply for it.
Well, and that was, sometimes you have to take what they tell you with a grain of salt, because they like to see public works because it looks good for them to do public works to HUD. It's not necessarily in the jurisdiction's best interest. So it's, that's, and after the, the county didn't get funded last year, and they didn't go in for anything that was less than, I believe, less than 95%, and they still didn't get funded, my feeling is that we have to go in with the most competitive grant possible, and that-
These would be separate grants though, right?
Nope, they would not. Each project gets scored separately, and then the scores are blended into a single score. So if you have one and they're weighted depending on how much money is being applied for, for each project, so if you have one that's 50% of your application, then that would get 50%, that score would count for 50% of your overall score. And so no matter how competitive the other four projects were, that 50% would drag you down.
So they, they won't award, they won't award partial? They won't say, well, your service projects we're going to award, but your public works project we're not?
Well, they award points based on a kind of a, like a sliding scale. So if your public, public service projects, and I don't, I don't know the exact formula, but if your public service projects, half of your application is, is full points, but your other half of your application is only half points, then you're going to, you're going to get dragged down. There's no way to avoid that. You're, you're-
So they don't, they don't evaluate them separately?
They evaluate each one separately, but then they blend it all into a weighted single score for the overall application. And so that weighting means that any non-competitive project will drag your thing down.
So our public works project would need to meet the targeted income group's needs?
Right, and you would have to find some way of limiting it to just those people. And, and depending on what the particular project is, we can look at how you would limit it to only people in the targeted income.
So for example, if you look at the scoring on the food bank, that's a, obviously a very targeted group.
Right.
And if you look at domestic violence, that's a targeted group.
Right.
The youth for, well, the court-appointed advocates is a special group. Front Street is not a special group.
That's right.
So that'll all be scored, but then the Front Street would be put in there and-
What about trying to supplement the county's budget for mental health services? I mean, they take care of all the city's mental health issues, and they have no money.
That would be a possibility.
That would come out of this?
Right, I mean, I, I don't think it's something we could do out of this one. We're, we're at our limit for public services right now. We can only ask for $400,000 in public services, but that's certainly something that we could look at. They have funded mental health services at the open door clinic before, in the past, so I know that that's something that they would look at. And if, almost anything you can make 100% TIG if you income screen the recipients, and you only use CDBG funds to fund those folks, and you have, if you have some other funding source to, to-
I get it.
So that's-
And we can change these four things that you put in here tonight if we want to?
Yes, you have the option.
We can change the, we can change the organizations and we can change the money? Or are these organizations the only ones eligible?
Well, those are the only ones that, that, basically, we, we went through a process with the county and did a joint public hearing when the NOFA first came out. You're required- with the county and did a joint public hearing when the NOFA first came out. You're required to do two hearings. One is your planning stage, and we did that as a joint meeting with the county. And we invited all of the private nonprofits that normally come and apply, to apply. Once we got all of the applications in, sat down with the county, and I sat down with Jim Carnegie at the county, and we looked over the various applications, looked at, kind of looked at all of them in terms of the level of need that they were showing, the number of clients that they serve, the, the good use of scarce resources. We asked them to provide some budget information, and some of them are doing a better job than others as far as looking at cuts need to be made, what are we cutting, what are we spending money on, what are we not spending money on, those kinds of things, and just what would happen if the service wasn't available anymore.
When Kelly said we could spend money on other things, for example-
I have a list.
You have a whole list, but once this is approved, if something's not on this list, can library-
I have library, I have-
Those can be added back to this?
This is where the workshop would come in very handy. Yes and no. There is a way to fund other, but first, let me explain, the library literacy program, can food bank, and, what is the other one? Help me out, do you remember?
Oh, senior center.
The senior center nutrition program are all being funded in the county's application.
By the county, okay, I was going to ask you that.
Yeah. And they may have one more, I can't remember. So that, that's what, we sat down and we looked at everybody and-
Was it the Boys and Girls Club?
No, they didn't, they did not submit an application, and I'm not sure why. But they, they did not, to my knowledge, they didn't come to the meeting, and they did not submit a proposal. So they were not one of the ones that, it, it would be difficult at this point to bring someone in who didn't go through the process. We're, we're quite a ways along with the folks that we're recommending, because this thing's due Friday, it has to be done and out the door on FedEx by Thursday.
My other, my other general thoughts were, we've been talking forever about trying to meet the needs of teens, you know, with the teen center, or services for the teens. And then also, our pool. I mean, we have to close because we can't afford to keep it open on Sundays. Why are we not applying to take care of our, I mean, that's a targeted income group, those, I mean-
Only if you income screened everybody that came to the pool, and only provided services with CDBG money to those folks who fell into that targeted income group.
So you, you income screen everybody that uses a library?
The literacy, illiterate adults are a targeted income group, they're assumed to be eligible. There are a certain set of, of folks that are presumed to be in that targeted income group regardless of their income. Illiterate adults, abused and neglected children, victims of domestic violence. Seniors are actually presumed 51% eligible. So what we've done in the past, both the city and the county, we put them in what's called a set aside project. And you can set aside up to 10% of your grant application for a project that's eligible but wouldn't be competitive. So that might be someplace that you could put the pool into, into that. That portion doesn't get rated and ranked. So you can put in those projects that are eligible, but they aren't competitive. You are limited, like in this case, you would be limited to $40,000, but for some things, that's it.
Would that open our pool on Sundays?
$40,000? Yeah, definitely.
I agree with that 100%.
So then the question would be, if, if you want to do that in this application, which of the projects would you take that away from?
I would, well, 10% would be $40,000, I would-
20, 10?
I, I would do it just like, whatever the proportion is here.
20, 10, and 10?
So 20 from Harrington House and 10 from each of the others.
You know, all along, I'm, I've said, we need to, in this day of budgets, we need to be looking at every nickel we can get to support the city.
What would be helpful, and it, and it is, you do have a huge advantage because you are presumed, you are above that 51% threshold. So what would be helpful for the future is if you could give me that list of things that you have, and I can start looking at it and saying, okay, here's how we could either use it as a set aside project, or we could, here's how we could tweak it enough to make it, you know, so that we can target the targeted income group and get it into a full application.
When could you have asked us for that information prior to today?
The NOFA came out about a month ago. So about a month is the time that we've had to get this together. And I'm perfectly willing to look at, you know, we kind of have the usual folks that come every year for this, and, and it would be nice to see some different projects.
Well, I like the idea of having the county and the city work on this and, you know, take care of the seniors in the library, and we'll take care of, you know, the CASA and RHS. That's a wonderful way to fund this.
It's worked out very well in the past.
If we have, if we can do 10% set aside to use for the pool and have it open again for extended hours, or just offset what we currently deficit spend now on the pool, it's $40,000 less than we're spending now.
We'd lose, I think it's like a little over $60,000 on the pool?
Actually, no, more like $200,000.
200 plus.
Oh, 200, wow.
Yeah.
I don't know what I was thinking about. Something we were losing $60,000.
A quarter, maybe.
Maybe that's what it was.
Probably right there. I have two clarifying questions. You talk about over 51%. Would you give me a, just a brief explanation of what that means?
Okay, targeted income group would be helpful to define that first. The targeted income group is considered anyone who makes 80% or less of the area's median income. So the HCD, Housing and Community Development calculates each, each jurisdiction's rate of how many people fall within that category based on, unfortunately, based on 2000 census data. So it's very old information, but that's what they use.
And what is our percentage based on that data?
I want to say it's somewhere in the low 60s. I haven't looked at it to be perfectly-
Our median income is not high. It's what, 28, 31,000?
I know it's higher than our surrounding counties because the prison skews it up a little bit.
Well, and the counties is, is, they don't make the 51% threshold, because the, most of the well-off folks live in the county, so.
Chirri, Viapond-
Yeah, Gaski, Ayuge have some pockets.
Ayuge.
Yeah, so they don't even make the threshold. They have to really do targeted stuff. So that's why I say the city's fortunate that you, you do meet that 51% threshold. It's just hard to make the application competitive if you go in with only the city's population.
Any questions, Charles? Anything else? Okay, so we are going to have to reword the resolution that- We can make a, we can make our motion contingent on the changes-
Okay.
-to the resolution.
Okay.
Right?
Sure.
Yeah.
Charlene, are you going, is it going to be realistic that this can all get done and get submitted in time with these changes? And how did you say we're going to get around the income screening at the pool?
If we're going to call it a set aside, and the fact that the city is, is overly 51% eligible makes, makes a project in the city eligible, and if we put it as a set aside, it doesn't hurt the competitiveness of the grant. Yeah, I think so. It's, the set aside is, I think, a little easier. I haven't looked at it for this year's application because I didn't think we were going to do one, but in the past, we haven't had to provide quite as much information for a set aside. And I believe you've applied for the pool in the past, so if I can find that application, that will help some.
Do we have to designate the 10% set aside?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to rewrite the resolution to show that.
Well, first of all, thank you.
You're welcome.
You've done a great job, and I'm really happy to have you working with us through this process. Thank you for getting us back on track.
Yeah.
In the past, this council that I've been a part of, not specifically this council, but as I've been a part of the council, we've been a part of the decision making process. So that's probably why we're kind of changing our, your tune here tonight.
Sure.
We've actually had the askers come and ask to, and made a presentation to the council in the past. And then we actually then made a recommendation as to how we wanted to, you know, do the percentages of money to whatever agency.
Okay.
And I know that it was, we did, we have worked with the county in the past as well, but, so.
Well, and that's something that, that we may need to discuss as far as a timeline, because we, we did only have about a month to do this. And a public hearing, of course, requires 10-day notice.
Right.
So in terms of, and, and I really can't start from scratch with only a week to do the, the application. It's far too complicated and requires-
I'm sure it is.
-far too much documentation to wait. I, I couldn't wait to make a decision till, till tonight. So we probably need to do some discussion about-
No, I understand that. I understand that.
Yeah, how we, how we can get you guys more involved. And we'll make sure that-
It's a process.
Yeah, it is. And we'll, we'll try to, try to make sure that you get particular notice of that planning meeting. We only have to have one a year, but that's generally where the, the discussion part comes, is in that planning meeting. And, and we may need to have those in front of the, we're not required to have them in front of the, the governing body, but that may be what you want to do in the future instead, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask a question, Charlene?
Sure.
Is it true that the recipients have to, are they audited regarding the funds that they're provided? And is it necessarily true that they make a report quarterly or a couple times a year to the council, or to yourself, or the city manager?
Well, they're required to submit written, there, there is a form that we developed that they have to report their expenditures. They're also, one of the things that we get points for is, is leverage, that is other funds that are put towards the project, and that's another thing that you need to think about for tonight, is if the city can afford to put, or we may want to count some of what you're already putting toward the pool as, as leverage. But they have to report that. We require that the subrecipients provide a certain amount towards their own programs in order to get funded. So they have to report that, they report their expenditures, and they report on, we've actually asked them to tell us, you know, give us some outcome measures that you feel comfortable that you can show us. In addition to numbers of clients that you serve, what other kinds of things can you, is unique to your program. So we set those up, and they do have to report those quarterly. I don't, we don't usually, we have to report to the state semi-annually as well, but I usually don't ask for any additional information from the grantees at that time, because it's just two quarters information. We give them at six months. And then annually, they have to do a grantee performance report that goes into our large grantee performance report, that again, reports on number of folks served and that sort of thing. So yes, they are required to do that. They are subject to the same monitoring. When the state comes up to monitor the city for their compliance, they have been known to go out to the subrecipients and look at their books. And I have every right to do that. Anybody from the city has every right to look at their books and make sure they're good.
I think the interest is in the follow-through when we're helping request the money, and then people are saying that they're going to do this or that. It's just a follow-up and a follow-through, I think.
My, my experience in the past, before we lost eligibility for CDBG, was that CASA and the Harrington House were very good about coming to the council and providing feedback to us.
Yeah, I don't know that any of the folks that we deal with regularly would have a problem with coming and reporting if that's what you wanted.
For another four years. We're having a little side conversation. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to open this up for a public hearing, Mr. Miles.
I've read the legal notice in the paper. I want to speak in favor of the three applicants. Right word that Susie does. Occasionally, during the third week of the month, I do use RHS's food bank, and I honestly have to say that RHS's food bank is better run than CAMP's. So I would hope you would support RHS's because they take into consideration that a number of us seniors are diabetic. They purchase material that I can use and that I don't have to throw away. I could do it can. I'd like to make an appeal tonight. If you people decide to do something at the pool that you consider us seniors, because we are, many of us, that 51%, and I believe the city could adapt programs, maybe on Sunday to keep the pool open, for us seniors. So I'm not against adding the pool. But I want to say this tonight. A lot of these programs, there's duplication. And I think the county and the city needs to look at the problem with these programs that we have in this community, that there are duplications. RHS has a reading program. Library has a reading program, and the college has a reading readiness for students that enroll the College of the Redwoods. Do we need three programs in this small community? We need to start thinking about this. Another thing we could use this money for, and maybe in the future, is to help low-income people within the city to pay our water rates, because some people even have problems paying their water bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. That's a nice idea, but we're not allowed to supplement sewer water, those kinds of services. I already asked two years ago. Susie?
Yeah? I'm Susie Minx, and I'm the executive director for CASA of Del Norte. And I'm pleased to be on the list for us again this year. And I'm so impressed that you all think you can have an hour workshop and get this CDBG thing down pat. Without assistance from Charlene, and she mentioned Jim Carnegie from the, from the county, people like me, we would not be able to navigate this. So she puts together little bits and pieces that we've handed along throughout this last month, and then makes a cohesive proposal that goes forward from the city. And so I'm appreciative that we've had that opportunity not to have to assemble it on our own, and I think probably staff as well. But for, from our standpoint, this is essential funding right now, and we're very much aware of what it means to the city to have this opportunity and perhaps use this fund, these funds in a lot of different ways, because I know you have a lot on your plate. But I just have to say that I think that even though our numbers aren't real large, the percentage of impact is, and the future that is there, the potential is there for those children is huge. And Mr. Slert, I'd like to tell you that also, from other funders, we have a requirement to be audited annually, and those are open documents, and you're welcome to those, just as Charlene or any other staff person would be, so. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight.
You're welcome.
That means a lot to me. Is there any other public comment? Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
I would move that we adopt Resolution 2010-16, approving the application and contract for the state community development block grant, authorizing its execution, and also authorizing Harrington House for 150, RHS Food Bank for 100, court-appointed advocates for 90, 10 percent set aside for the pool at 40, and general grant administration at 20.
My second. Is there any further discussion?
If the city is going to count the funds that it provides to the pool as leverage, that needs to be included in the resolution as well.
To include the money we spend in the pool. Include that in my motion.
Okay. I'll make it pretty.
Thank you, Charlene.
You're welcome.
Can I actually ask Charlene one question, too, that I think will help all of us? When do we get the news, good or bad, about whether funding is approved or denied? Is that October, November?
Hope it makes a big splash.
Yeah.
I've got to get one in a minute.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and this is to include these amounts in the resolution that will be amended but approved by this council this evening. Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Westfall.
Yes.
Councilmember Burns.
Yes.
Councilmember Slert.
Yes.
And Ms. Shalong.
Yes, and please note that Councilwoman Murray has recused herself.
Do you want her back now?
Please. Okay, we are moving on to our next public hearing, which is approval of the 2009 to 2014 housing element for the City of Crescent City, and then approving the resolution. And Mr. Butler?
Madam Mayor, members of the council?
Brian, the babies don't, you don't have any pull-over babies, I'm sorry. You come in second every time.
I have pictures in my black lab, but that's...
It's been all about the babies tonight. Charlene, thank you, and we look forward to having you make it happen by Thursday.
I will do everything possible.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, you'll recall probably last summer, I'm thinking it was June or July of last year, we went through a process that included a couple of community meetings and a review by the city council of a draft of the housing element, which is required by California state law. Speaking of CDBG stuff, one of the things that is required if we're going to be eligible for CDBG funding is that we be in compliance with our housing element process. So what we're about to do now is very important for a number of reasons. When I came aboard in January 2009, the housing element project had kind of been sitting for a while, and so rather than trying to do all this in-house, I made a, an executive decision to go ahead and use consulting support. And we went with, looked at a couple of proposals, ended up going with Pacific Municipal Consultants, the Davis office, and they have done a very good job for us as far as I'm concerned. They have taken this through the whole housing and community development review process, which is very lengthy and involves usually several revisions. And we're now at a point where they have given us the tentative green light for a version that they have approved, and that has to come back to you for final review tonight. And we're going to have Brian Millar take us through a quick PowerPoint on what the housing element's all about, what this document before you says, and answer any questions that you may have. So Brian, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of council, Brian Millar with PMC. I've got a PowerPoint presentation. I promise it'll be brief, and so I'll run through this in about five or six minutes, if that sounds all right. We'll talk very briefly here about what is a housing element, the regional housing needs or RENA numbers that are important in determining what goes into the housing element, what some of the responsibilities are for the city, what basically is in the housing element document itself, which really is the next bullet item, which is the goals, policies, and programs. It's the heart of the housing element. A housing element is required, it's one of the required elements of a city's general plan, one of the seven required elements under state law. It's the one element, interestingly, that has a five-year timeline associated with it in terms of having to be updated. General plans, land use elements, and so forth can go longer than that. The housing element that you have before you sets forth a five-year strategy for addressing how the city will go about meeting its housing needs. The Housing and Community Development Department at the state, or HCD, had done, sorry to make a step back, the previous housing element had been done in conjunction with Crescent City, and that had been approved by HCD, as well as allocating what the RENA numbers, the regional housing needs numbers would be. This time around, the housing element's being updated for the city. The county has pursued its update separately. The regional housing needs assessment, it's allocated by HCD at the state to all cities and counties. It's based on local population and employment projections, and it addresses over and under concentration of low-income housing throughout the region. The city importantly is not required or expected to build the units that the RENA identifies, but the city must demonstrate in its adopted housing element that it's taking actions to facilitate the development of all different types of housing. And these are the RENA numbers that were allocated to the city, which basically shows that over the seven-year housing period through 2014, the RENA would identify that the city would have to show an ability to accommodate just over 300 housing units. Some new state laws also find their way into the policy programs of the housing element, including requirements for how emergency shelters, transitional, and supportive housing are developed, how the city would respond to extremely low-income housing needs, as well as how the housing element addresses site inventories. The city's responsibilities include identification of adequate sites for provision of housing, assisting in the development of affordable housing, addressing and removing any governmental constraints to housing, and some of those are discussed, or potential constraints are discussed in the housing element and in the appendix, conserving and improving the condition of the affordable housing stock in the city, promoting fair housing, and then preserving assisted housing. There's several sections in the housing element itself. We put the last bullet item first, the housing plan, the goals, policies, and programs. We think that's the most important piece, and then the rest of it basically is support or framework information going to that housing needs assessment, the constraints analysis, resources, and so forth. In terms of housing units, we, just some quick numbers breaking out, you can see it's mostly single-family as well as multifamily throughout the city, 53 versus 45 percent. In terms of income levels, you can see that, and these are numbers that are assigned for the county, but looking at households of four, you can see what the different income levels are in terms of determining who might qualify for, for example, a low or very low-income housing program, and where the percentages break out. So there's 40 percent of the community at above moderate, but you can see there's still a substantial number, 30 percent, at very low and low-income categories.
And that's why the county doesn't make the targeted income, but the city does, because the city breaks ours down a little further than what you have given. Is that correct?
Well, I think it has your total population, so the population of the city that meets that extremely low, very low, or low to moderate, or low income is, exceeds 51 percent. And then, but when you add the county in, they're, you know, they have a much bigger piece of the pie.
Some of the special needs housing that we have identified, single-parent households, almost 20 percent are female single-headed households, but of that, about almost half are at the property level. Unemployment, obviously, fairly high at the city as well as in the county. Fairly significant senior population, just over 900. We see that rate continuing to increase. And then households with disabilities as well, physical and so forth. The housing plan objectives call out performances relative to housing rehabilitation, the housing opportunities throughout the entire community, not just targeted areas or neighborhoods, support for the entire city economy, encouraging infill development and second units where possible, practical, preserving the affordable housing units that are already in town, and then increasing energy conservation measures. In terms of constraints to development of housing, there's a number of non-governmental constraints that always come into play, the location, including environmental, is the site ready to be developed or not, the availability of that land, the cost of that land, construction costs, and so forth, all come into play in terms of deciding from a market standpoint how lands might come into play for future development of housing. On the governmental side, we look at things like land use controls, zoning, for example, some of the development standards that also are included within the zoning ordinance, issues relative to code enforcement, what site improvements the city might typically require fees, and we can talk here about application fees as well as impact fees that might be assigned to a particular type of project. The permit review and approval process, how long does it take, what can an applicant expect, and then what some of the public infrastructure improvements might be. Some of the incentives, and you'll see this peppered throughout some of the policies, that the city can use to assist in enticing and supporting affordable housing development, things like financial assistance, density bonuses, improving public infrastructure, streamlining the application process, funding of public fees, and that's something that you would consider on a case-by-case basis as appropriate. And then modifying development standards as you think necessary. And then the goals, policies, and programs, again, we look at housing diversity, affordable housing, how constraints are being addressed in terms of governmental constraints, housing conservation and neighborhood preservation, fair housing, and then also energy conservation. When we develop the goals and policies and programs, we looked at a number of different considerations, starting with the existing housing element, looked at how that element might have performed over time. Are there goals and policies that were worth maintaining, or some that might no longer be applicable? We'd also looked at the decision-making process through the city, citizen input, state requirements that come into play, existing conditions, and then also experience in terms of how housing is being built.
Brian, when you do that, do you actually make recommendations to city staff on things that could be improved?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The benefits of state certification, the city manager had mentioned this, certainly one piece is having legally adequate general plan, and the housing element is a component of that. Greater protection from any legal challenges, particularly challenges relative to provision of affordable housing, priority for state housing funds, which came up just recently here in the meeting, and then exemption from possible future state penalties for noncompliance, something the state is always hanging out there as, I think, a concern in terms of how cities and counties around the state might actually be pooling their housing elements together, and then how well they're actually implementing them over time. So with all of that, you've got the housing element document before you, it's, there have been some revisions, but by and large, the draft that you had seen before is substantially unchanged. It's mostly what we had done with HCD over the last several months, clarifications and so forth in the document, some background research that they had asked us to do, but the seven goals that you've got, that we've identified in the staff report haven't changed. The policy program remains fairly intact. So with that, the attached resolution that you have tonight, staff recommends the approval of the resolution, and it would do three things. One is it would approve a project negative declaration, a secret document for this. It would repeal the existing housing element, and then immediately after that would be the adoption of the new housing element. With approval of the item tonight, assuming council does take that action, we'll ensure the delivery of the council's resolution to the state HCD staff within the next couple of days, and we'll hand-deliver that just to make sure they have it, and it doesn't cause any sort of delays relative to any other programs that you might be pursuing. So that concludes the presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Slert, do you have any?
Oh, Pam, thank you.
Smory?
No.
Ms. Westfall?
No.
Mr. Burns?
I just noticed on some of the tables and such, the data, does that census data, is that why it's like 1990, 2000, 2010?
Yeah, we use a combination of data, the latest available census data, but we try to supplement that wherever possible with things like State Department of Finance data and other local information.
I know some is 2009 data, but a lot of it's, well, and I understand census is, that's what, the data that exists.
So on the goals, Rod, A through G, what are the next steps for the city?
Well, I think part of what we're going to be doing is making sure that, especially as the redevelopment analysis goes forward and the low-mod set-aside analysis goes forward, we, we're in a nice position in that we have money available through those set-aside funds to start implementing some of these goals. And I think it'll be a process of, through the council and the agency board, deciding which of these goals are the most important for us right now, what are the most realistic for us to be able to achieve right now, and that will drive budgeting decisions about the future use of that low-mod set-aside money. And keep in mind that we not only have about a million dollars available, but we have a stream of revenue each year of about $200,000 of new money coming in each year. So we have, plus anything that we might do.
For the low...
Low-mod set-aside redevelopment agency, yeah.
Yeah.
So, and keep in mind, there might be, you know, there may be grant opportunities, aside from the money that Charlene was just talking about, you can apply for a separate pot of money. In fact, the county, Del Norte County, has recently received a large chunk of money, I think $800,000, that can be used for rehab of existing housing units. So there are other pots of money.
Didn't the city used to do low-income rehab projects?
We had our own home loan rehab program.
And I know that we've been going through an auditing of those loans.
Right, and we've been getting actually a lot of payoffs of those loans now, which has created another source of money for us, about $150,000 to $200,000 currently that will be coming back to you and asking for some direction on what the council wants us to do with that money. That's as people refi, sell their homes, those loans get paid off, and we get these big lump-sum paybacks.
That's good. I'd like to see some kind of an update on the current loans that are still out there, and what, you know, what money we do have to invest, and then maybe presented with options as far as continuing a rehab loan process, or providing, I don't remember what the program is called, but I know it's available in California, but it's basically an assistance program for down payments on first-time buyers' homes. I know my niece went through the process.
You told me over in Chester County?
Lassen County, and they provided the down payment, and then her return, her mortgage payment was like $300 a month on a 1,300-square-foot brand-new home, but she had to put sweat equity into it. And after like so many years, like five or 10 years, then the down payment was forgiven. And it was just a great program for young people trying to start off on the right foot.
Is it also true that if we don't use the money, we lose it after a period of time?
It is true with the RDA set-aside money, once you go over a million dollars in your balance, which is right about where we're sitting now, how soon we would show up on their radar screen is questionable, but they could come after a part of that money if they're not convinced that we have a credible plan for using it.
And we don't have one.
That's true. That's part of our...
We're going to get one.
That's right.
The state sniffing around for money. I know that the housing element...
Don't put that in the minutes.
Right.
I, I, if this, I know that we had been working on it when Will Kaplinger was here, and that I had been part of the committee to help do this. So it's a long, arduous process to get this done, so it's exciting to have this near completion, so...
I know, I thought it was done when that last young woman made her presentation.
Yeah, yeah, no, that shows you how the process works at HCD. There's usually anywhere from, what, two to five rounds of revisions?
It can be lengthy. We were fortunate in that the initial draft that we submitted, we, if memory serves, I think it was a, something like a four-page letter, which by HCD standards is pretty good. But within that, there were still some things that took a while to negotiate, discuss with staff, and do some research on them. We had back and forth with HCD. discuss with staff and do some research on them, we had back and forth with HCD, we wanted to ensure that when we did resubmit, this was going to be something that they accepted.
Sure. Okay, is there any public comment? We'll open up the public hearing. Okay, seeing none, we'll close it, bring it back to the council to approve Resolution 2010-17.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2010-17.
Second.
Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
And Mayor Schlong?
Yes, thank you, thank you very much for being here. Hope you enjoy our city while you're here.
Yeah, they stayed at the Hampton Inn last night with his wife, so we got some TOT revenue.
She's not spending money in the community right now.
Can't beat the view.
Yeah.
Check that out, because that's part of your tasks, the Hampton Inn, if you.
We actually did say that when we come to town, we would stay in the city motel.
Okay, do we have any outside reports tonight?
No, Mayor, none tonight.
Okay, wow, we're actually getting to general public comment, that's a new, that's late. Okay, any member of the audience is invited to address the council on anything within our jurisdiction, comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted, however, the council's not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items after receiving recognition, please state your name, if you live in the city or the county for the record, and limit your public comment to three minutes, Mr. Miles.
My name's Richard Miles, I live at 608 G Street. I have a concern, because I do read the legal notices in the newspaper, and the other day, there was a legal notice by the Tri-Agency, and it deals with the seaside or grill, which happens to be the old Jefferson State Building. Well, the Tri-Agency has turned that property to deal not realty for pity process because the people ain't making their payments, and, this is another old story, the city made a grant and a loan to the current owners. I hope we got paid.
It's just a grant?
No, we gave them a grant for the landscaping, and then we gave them another loan, no, Kelly, we gave them a loan to cut everything up in little shop areas, I don't think you were on the city council at the time, but we did do that. Here's a prime piece of real estate in our redevelopment area, it should have a future, but because of mismanagement by two operators, the building's rusty. At least Eric Taylor does a good job of making them mow their lawn occasionally, so it doesn't become a weed patch. I would hope that the gentleman that just left, and our wonderful gentleman at the Tri-Agency would eventually find a bidder for that property, and it could be developed in what it should have been in the first place. Should have been a showplace because it's on Front Street, it ain't.
Nope.
Huh?
Nope.
And both the Tri-Agency and my city, in the past, when it was first developed, took it in the shorts. That needs to stop, because you're giving your redevelopment money to these so-called ideal projects, and people fall on their face.
Thank you, Richard.
I'm gonna, like to finish up, we need accountability for such projects in the future.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business, we need to consider and approve an agreement between the county of Del Norte and the city of Crescent City for animal control services, Rod?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have several agreements for ongoing services, last year, you approved an update to the dispatch services agreement, this is another example of where we are working with the county and where we contract with them for ongoing services. For many years, the city has contracted with the county for animal control services, and currently, the county provides the basic animal control services, which would include operation of the dog pound, dog licensing, maintaining records of dog licensing, impounding stray dogs, investigation of dog bites, the quarantining of dogs, investigation of loose animal or nuisance complaints, response to law enforcement referrals, enforcement of state laws and regulations concerning animal care, investigations of violations of humane treatment laws, and adoption services for dogs, finding homes for dogs. The county approached us earlier this year, Mr. Ken Smith, the agricultural commissioner, asked us to update the agreement, it had been several years since it had been updated, and the agreement that you have before you tonight is an update of that agreement, really no major changes made in terms of who provides what services or the costs involved, the way the costs work is we pay a percentage of the costs of the previous year, and it works out to 17% of the actual net cost of the county's total cost of operations for animal control services. They do keep and collect, or collect and keep, the dog license fees and any impound fees, so they have their contract amount from us and then their fee revenue. I can tell you that I have been here almost 17 months and have not, to my knowledge, received a single complaint that has reached my office about animal control services, the chief points out that there are a lot of issues that he and his crew resolve in the field, so I'm not suggesting that there are never issues, but I can tell you, after 20 years of glory in city management, that it's very rare for animal control complaints, well, it's common, I'll restate it, it's very common for animal control issues to reach the city manager's office, reach city council meetings on a regular basis, and the fact that we're somehow resolving that stuff before it gets to me or to you is a sign that we, I think, have a pretty decent level of service in place, and I can also tell you that would be extremely expensive if we were to try to do it on our own, just the costs of sheltering alone are huge, so I feel confident that we're providing, that we have a very efficient way of delivering these services, and I would recommend that we go ahead and approve this extension of the agreement, update of the agreement, Mr. Black was involved early on in the process, this time we actually remembered to have the city attorney look at the agreement, which is always nice, so he and Mr. Hinian were both doing their thing from their own side, and we have it before you tonight, I think, an agreement that will work for us goes through 2012, I believe, so about a two-and-a-half-year, I'm sorry, June 30th, 2013, so about a three-year extension, and we would recommend approval of that, it's all general fund in terms of the way we pay for it, and the costs have ranged the last few years, anywhere from $17,000 on the low end to about $30,000 on the high end.
Well, I get complaints all the time, and I always have to refer them to the county, I never have them call the city, and the biggest complaints that I get are that people call and they don't respond, or like if there's, you know, a vicious dog or something and they don't respond, or they'll come down and they won't investigate, they'll just say they went and told the owner, they gave them a warning, it happened at my son's grandparents' house, that my son's grandmother's afraid to go out in the yard, and all they've done is issue a warning, and they've called like 20 times. So the last complaint that I got, I ended up calling Janine Gallatioto directly, just to have her deal with it, because I didn't know what the process was.
Is it 17% a prorated cost based on population?
Yes, that's how they arrived at that.
But yet we get no revenue on, the revenue from fees, licensing, that just goes to the county and the city's never offset, is that net or does it not include revenue from?
No, they keep all of the licensing and impound revenue.
How much is licensing and impound revenue? How much does it offset their cost?
Yeah, I don't know what they collect from the city limits for licensing and impounding.
Well, that, to me, makes a difference, because if that revenue, city people are paying tax and impound fees, and so are the county folks, but yet we're still paying 17% of net, so that's not a true 17%. I mean, you can't have all the revenue and get help with your expenditures, you know, doesn't make sense to me.
I agree with you, except for when I look at it from the other point, if we didn't do this, we'd have a lot more expenses than the 17%.
Required by law to have a animal service control? Is that right?
Please come to the podium, Mr. Black.
Chief of Police slash dog catcher.
Right.
Let's add that to your list.
We have a vehicle we can transport animals in.
Yeah, that's true, I concur with the city manager in regards, if we do it ourselves, it's going to cost us a lot more, but we do get complaints in regards to vicious dogs, loose dogs, things of that nature, to the extent where I have to put dog snares in the trunks of the patrol cars, and once we do that, so now do we do with them, we put them in the backseat of our patrol cars, and we take them out there, and a lot of times, I don't believe we even have the keys to the agriculture in order that we can put them in there, because.
If you get one after hours.
We tell a lot of the citizens, we'll tie them up and they'll pick them up in the morning, but then again, if it's on a Friday, the dog's not picked up on a Monday because nobody's on on the weekend, so that has been an issue for us for some time, I think that, just like the city manager said, if we did, it would cost us a lot more money, but then again, the services that we're giving to the citizens could be tweaked a little bit more than what's being presented.
I agree. Mr. Black?
I was gonna say, I think in the old days, the police used to have to just come and shoot the dogs down in the street.
That'd be good PR now, wouldn't it? But I think you'd have a lot of support on one hand if there's a vicious dog, and, you know, I think there'd be some support to do that, on the other hand, I understand that you shouldn't do that city limits, it's probably not a good precedent to set, unless there's endangerment of life happening.
I think that's, I think animal control in a lot of cities is under the umbrella of the police department as well as code enforcement, and they combine them all together, as well as nuisance vehicles and things of that nature, which does help supplement the cost for that too, for one individual doing all three things, so here, it's something that I think needs to be taken into consideration, and I think that by tweaking the agreement, I think they'll be receptive to it and wanting to keep this contract for them, because it's beneficial to them as well, but I agree with you, we don't get anything in return for those violations that go to court, and I don't know of any of them that have gone to court.
As long as they shoot a dog if they're running on a bridge.
Oh, there is a, there's a clause in the agreement that I'm not sure, I don't know whether it's being followed up on or not, but in paragraph 11, the county agrees to provide the city with monthly reports on call service, citations, impoundment, and other data that the county deems appropriate, so.
That'd be new.
I have, I've never received one, but then again, in their defense, I've never asked for one either.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm thinking that we should ask.
Well, they're providing something, because if you look at the, what we provided, Robin, where did these, do these come directly to you, or did they come from Donna Arnett? So we're.
I don't want to, I don't want to create the whole feeling.
No.
And that's not my point, my point should be, it's a place of discussion, that maybe you and Jay now could have a conversation about this, because this contract, although you can always amend a contract, and you can always come back and say, we appreciate the service, we know what that entails, but, you know, what is the fee from the city versus the fee from the county, I'm assuming it's that same 17%?
The other thing that is an option in some counties, if the council has the desire to spend the additional money to get the level of service, is we could, we could contract for a dedicated Crescent City-only animal control officer.
I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting that.
No, but I would like to have, you to have the discussion of having more access, you know, after hours and on weekends, if you have a vicious dog that you need to remove from a home, I mean, if it's.
Can't leave it.
That serious, yeah.
Right, and so that's the reason we got the snares, because the officers were placing, their lives were placed in jeopardy as well, so you imagine what the citizens feel in regards to that when they come outside, so I think, I think it's something that we could probably enhance the agreement with them, and I.
And maybe, maybe we could get a copy of their process, when they get a phone call, what's the process, well, how do they determine if they're going to show up or not?
I'd just be happy for access.
I'm just gonna have them start calling you now, now that I.
Terrific, thank you.
I didn't know you, I didn't know you provided that service.
Every time the officer.
I do now.
You know, every time they come to snare.
What else is all my job to protect here?
My dogs, when they get liz, they've never gotten bit.
Is that all?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else from the council?
Otherwise, I'd just like this, if you could just mention that with, do you have regular meetings with?
Yeah, we're, he's really swamped the budget stuff now, but we're gonna get back on track.
I would like to just bring it up and broach the subject and see where it goes, not that it's.
Okay, anything else?
Well, because we don't have the capacity for dealing with horses or dogs or cockatiels either.
Well, we shouldn't have any horses.
Well, they do have some statistics about horses and goats and cockatiels in HDC.
Mr. Black and I were just talking about, I think this is county-wide.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna see if we can get a city-specific.
Okay.
Report.
All right, so that's the whole county?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's gotta be.
Okay, because I.
Yeah, no, I know, it doesn't stay, it's not very clear.
Okay, all right.
But we do have deer problems sometimes.
Unpeeled beach drive, is that?
And elk issues on the airport, and they won't go snare them.
Elk stinks.
Call in, call in Black.
Thanks for that comment.
Public comment, Mr. Miles?
I personally don't really get it for what we're paying for, I want to give you a few examples, I personally know that we only have two-and-a-half animal control officers on a daily basis, Dog Pound has a secretary, and then during dog license season, the county hires a temporary person, here's what gets me, I'll give you a good example, EDC rents a house to somebody, well, the renter has a little dog, and this little dog is famous for going over at the vet's center and crapping, well, guess who shovels it up? We have a lease law in town, my city parks, the people have to clean up before they mow beachfront park, because people just let their dogs loose, they run all over the park, someday maybe we'll have a dog park, I hope so, but, where's the dog catcher? The city isn't. the dog catcher? The city isn't getting the patrols within the city during their shift or operation that we should. I think that's something that should be asked of Jay. Why? If they got two and a half people to do the whole county, aren't we part of the county? Also, I wanna thank our pound, our humane society, and our two cat people for the no-kill policy. But there's something that really bothers me. I think the chief knows about this. Many of our drug dealers love pit bulls. There, there are kennel laws in this community and they're not being enforced by our pound people. My question is why? I think it's time if, like Dennis says, if we're gonna start paying this, you know, what was it, thirty-four thousand dollars a year?
It's ranged from seventeen on the low end to thirty on the high end last few years.
You know, thirty thousand dollars is a lot of money and they do get the dog license.
Thank you, Richard. Moving back to the council.
I immediately approve the agreement between the city and the county of Del Norte for animal control services with the caveat that our city manager, uh, visit with the county administrative officer and discuss the issue of services, reports, and dollars.
I'll second that.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh, we are tabling item fifteen and moving on to sixteen, an update on the transition of Harbor Seafood Processing wastewater services for the city's new wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Weir and Mr. Barnes.
I'm actually gonna start off. Um, this was placed on the agenda at the request of Councilwoman Murray, so I'm sure she'll have a chance to ask us her questions about it. But it actually, the timing was good and I think we appreciate the chance to talk about it because, um, back in September of last year, we came to the council with kind of a general, give us your tentative green light to move forward with providing wastewater services to the seafood processor at Harbor.
Right. Oh, is this the, um, issue with, um, Harbor Commissioner, uh, Phillips?
I don't...
I, I heard from the Harbor Commissioner, Harbor that...
Yeah, I think something happened, yeah, something happened at the Harbor Commission.
Between Catherine and Ron, okay.
But again, we, we needed to come to you anyway because we need to kind of give you an update on what's going on and get some authorization tonight on a financial question about all this. So what we did over that period from last September to now is begin work on the industrial discharge permit, which will need to be approved between the city and Albers Seafoods. And Mr. Barnes is gonna address where that all stands right now. We begun to look at it, we began to look at a number of ways to make the connection happen, you know, looking at the equipment at the harbor, what needs to happen there, what do we need to do to make the connection. Um, Bill Renfro, for example, has been kind of running around saying that we can just put the seafood waste right into the existing, what does he say, sanitary sewer. That isn't necessarily true and we, you may wanna...
It's close to being true.
Yeah, but, but the, as Eric and Jim will explain, the, the pump, the, um, lift station capacity is not really there to deal with that right now, especially if you think about growth that may happen in the harbor down the road, so...
Right, but Rod, I thought in the process through the, the meetings that have been had, that the process was thoroughly outlined as to how the seafood processing plant was gonna have to filter before it went into our, uh, stream and that the lift stations were going to be used at night when there wasn't as much flow so that we could handle it.
Right, that's, that's the system that we are proposing and we're gonna have, uh, Mr. Weir give you more detail about what we think the preferred alternative is for making it all happen. Um, bottom line is we're at a point now where we have what we believe is a doable technical solution to making it work. We have a financing mechanism that meets my goal, my challenge to staff, was to do it at little or no cost to the harbor and little or no cost to the city. And Mr. Weir is gonna outline a little bit about how that would work.
Magic.
Yeah, he's, he's amazing, he's got a, um, I am going to be tonight the Crescent City version of British Petroleum CEO.
Ooh.
I don't know his name.
That's not, can we just fire you now?
That's a lot better than O.G.
No.
Yeah, Tony Hayward, Tony Hayward, and I am...
Wasn't fired?
No, no.
He should be.
He was on his yacht over the weekend in England at some yacht race. But no, I'm, I'm going to allow you to take, to do any kind of public berating of me that you want to, like, uh, Tony Hayward in Congress last week, because I made the dumb move of basically promising the harbor back in December that we were gonna be ready to take their first Har, Albers seafood waste on August first of this year. And I think that's what created some concern last week with, uh, Rich Young and possibly some of the commissioners, was that we were now basically saying that's not gonna happen on August first. If you think about it, I should never have made that statement because the plant's not even gonna be done really until July fifteenth. We're about a month, July fifteenth, July thirty-first, we're about a month away from it. But we're gonna need to have some time to get everything ready to actually accept the waste, which I think is still doable by the start of crab season. And my goal is gonna be to push so that we have maybe a month before crab season starts. Official start of crab season is November fifteenth. And we're gonna try to really hustle and see if we can get this all squared away by October fifteenth, which would give us a month to make adjustments and, and, uh, be ready to go for the official start of the crab season.
Well, I don't like your strategy here, but, um, I don't think it was a dumb move at all. Um, I think that we all agreed that by August or September, that we would be able to be online. And I, that's where that came from. It wasn't you just making a statement.
You can't make promises, you're not elected.
No, that's true.
Exactly.
But if there, if there does need to be a Tony Hayward figure, I will take.
Well, the reason that we talked about Au- August or September is because the seafood processor could actually start bringing crab from San Francisco here in Oc- October and actually doing business and, and creating those jobs a little earlier than December.
So what we've done tonight is we've lined up, uh, a, a tag team approach. Mr. Barnes is gonna talk about the, uh, pre-treatment permit. He's also gonna need a quick update on what's going on at the treatment plant because we had a major milestone within the past couple of weeks with the MBR, uh, being up and running and the active, the sludge activation process happening. So he'll talk about that. Then Eric's gonna outline, uh, the preferred connection technology and the financing mechanism that we're proposing and have met with the county and the harbor on already, uh, twice in the past couple of weeks. So that'll at least give you an update. And then I need to kind of close out by asking you a question about the financial angle of things and whether, uh, I wanna get some council authorization on moving forward with all of this, see if you're ready to, to commit to that. So Jim, why don't you start with, uh, your material?
What's in the bag, Goose?
Yeah, that's a part of my, uh, presentation. I have, uh...
Bucket of sludge?
Yeah, I was gonna say some sludge in there, what?
The, uh, first of all, I think, uh, what we were originally talking about in, uh, was the permit and trying to get this industrial pre-treatment ordinance done. We're, we're trying to get the ordinance to you either at the next meeting or the meeting after and so that's in the process. And, uh, along with that is to get, uh, the ordinance to Albers and, uh, Lonnie intends to have the ordinance to Albers. He's going to go through Albers this week and, and get their process down and get the ordinance to them, uh, probably next week sometime, so.
Can we ask questions along the way? Why has that taken so long?
Well, I think the, um, I think, well, it's more than anything else, it's just, we have, uh, it's probably just us getting that done, trying to get the treatment plant done, get that done. We had a proposal from a consultant that was, uh, well over six figures to do the pre-treatment project. And instead of having them do it, we had a consultant and us do the work. And so we were doing the ordinance, we had Albers, I mean, uh, Rumiano's, uh, industrial permit to do. And we had to get those things done because the EPA had a, um, review to do inside the city and they were reviewing our ordinance and Rumiano's permit. We had a industrial survey of all the non-residential, uh, units, all the users that we had to get out. And the reason it was, uh, over six figures is there was a lot of work to do because they were here about, uh, I think it was three or four weeks ago. We had to get all that work done on the industrial pre-treatment ordinance. I mean, all industrial pre-treatment information, all those three things done. And that was a lot of work to do in-house with our, uh, just one individual. And, uh, I guess me as an individual, Public Works Director, felt that I didn't wanna pay that amount of money for the industrial pre-treatment work. And so we did it in-house instead. To get that done so that we weren't in trouble with the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the EPA, I invested the time to get that work done, to get the ordinance done, and to do all of that so that when we had our review by the EPA three weeks ago, we had most of that work done. And so then also, uh, Lonnie Levi, who was involved in getting most of that work done along with our consultant, was, uh, going through a lot of the classes and so on that we've been having because we had a, uh, the, uh, the people that were building the MBR and putting that together was having classes and, and he was involved in a lot of that. So just getting him to be able to do all that work. So it's been a lot going on. So we just got the MBR up and running and so all those classes are done. Those were three, uh, days a week those classes were going on, so. And trying to get the plant up and running, everything going, as he's a construction manager at the same time. It's just hard to get all this done and get that done at the same time.
Yeah, I just remember providing like a draft to Albers like six months ago.
Well, it was, I think, three months ago. When, when was that?
Well, yeah, we provided some, some rate information and some analysis of what we would charge Albers last summer probably. And then the big commitment originally was to have a draft pre-treatment commit, a permit to Don Albert by March thirty-first. So we're almost three months behind that now.
So...
I, I just wanna clarify, cause you're, you're mixing the terms up a little bit, Jim. The pre-treatment ordinance is different than the pre-treatment agreement that will be entered between the city and Albers.
Of course.
And so the, the pre-treatment agreement, Albers doesn't yet have a draft of that, right?
No.
No. I understand you're talking about pre-treatment agreement or ordinance or for the wastewater treatment plant, right?
I, I didn't understand this. Thank, thank you for clarifying that, cause I, I didn't understand that part, cause I was...
We don't have the agreement with Albers done because he's been working on the agree, the ordinance.
The overall city ordinance.
For the overall wastewater plant.
And that ordinance will be coming in.
And it, that covers everybody on the system.
Okay.
Including, it'll also cover county outside the city limits.
Okay.
CSA.
Yeah. And then there is an individual, uh, contract, if you will, for industrial users. We have one industrial user at this time and that's Rumiano's.
Right, okay.
And then, uh, Albers would be another industrial user.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now, we had a, uh, uh, the good news is that the MBR was started this last week. And, um, with the treatment plant, you have these major hurdles you go through and this is really the last major hurdle we went through. And, uh, as, when I was talking at the economic summit, I mentioned that in the nineteen fifties, the, uh, federal government had a period of time in the fifties when the country was going through expansion and all the rivers were so polluted, they decided to build treatment plants throughout the country and they took out, they built, uh, what they called, uh, primary treatment in the plants and they took out the solids from the, uh, waste. And, uh, so they built plants all over the country and they paid for them. And then in the seventies, they came back through because they found that the rivers were a lot better, but they found that they needed to, uh, they felt that they need, the EPA was created in, in, in the sixties. And they, in the seventies, they came back through and they started taking out the, uh, contaminants in the water itself. And that was the detergents and the urine and the stuff that were dissolved in the water.
Is that when the tertiary system?
And that was the secondary treatment.
Oh, okay.
And so that's what was, our, our facility was built in the fifties and then the next part of our plant was built in the seventies and both those were built under those programs. And in most communities, they had continued growth. And so when you have the tertiary treatment and, and the, it's the new technology, as the communities had money, they incorporated that new technology in their plants and so they had, uh, higher quality of water. But in plants along the coast and so on where you didn't have, uh, ex, uh, new growth in the community, they, the plants tended to just get old and the quality of their water continued just to stay the way it was. And so you'll see, the fifties to the seventies, you had a, a jump. And now what we're seeing is the state says, the quality in the seventies just isn't good enough anymore. You need to really change the quality of your water. And so I wanted to show you the quality, the change from the, uh...
The prison system is a tertiary system.
Yeah, yes it is.
Drum roll, please.
Yeah.
So this is the, uh, and this is quite a change from, if you looked at the quality in the fifties, because prior to the fifties, it was just raw sewage going out into the ocean, so.
That will lay flat, that desktop will lay flat.
Yeah, I was thinking about it. So that is the, uh...
Lay flat, seriously.
So that's the difference in the quality of the water.
Lift up the desk and just fold that under. Then I, then I won't, then I...
You won't worry somebody, though.
Yeah, cause it'll spill.
That's a fifties versus the seventies?
No. That is the, uh...
I was gonna ask where you got it.
That's the newest, the newest water. So you can see it's almost pure water.
And that's what we're gonna water like, that we could water the beachfront with that.
Yeah.
And eventually other, other places if...
So...
Needed to.
And actually, that's been sitting for a while. It was clearer before it sat for a while because it hasn't been disinfected. So as it sits for several hours, there's still bacteria in it. I was actually gonna get some water and I actually did that.
You drank it?
No, I was gonna get this water and pretend like it was this water and take a drink of it for you. But, uh, I got to looking at it and it was quite a bit clearer, so. Along that, it isn't that much clearer, is it? That's actual water from the faucet. But it's clear enough that I didn't wanna do it. it. But you can see...
I'd say you deserve a big round of applause.
Yeah.
Great.
We do have, things are, uh, you can tell that, uh, the water is really a lot better, and, uh, it is interesting, but see, there's pressure in that now. The bugs are actually eating and building pressure, so, uh...
Not let that explode.
Don't worry, they won't do that. But, uh, it is interesting. If I were to drink that, you would get pretty sick pretty fast. But, when they, they, this would all be disinfected and would take care of that problem. But, um, but you can actually, there's quite a difference, and the state just doesn't put up with this anymore, and that's why we had to get it done, and we had to get it fixed. And, uh, the world changes through the years. It didn't put up with the 50s stuff anymore, when you didn't clean the water, and now, it doesn't put up with this anymore. It, it puts up with this. And, and there's a day coming when you're not going to probably be able to put this out in the ocean either. They probably want to get the water and, and get rid of it some other way, so. That's just the way the world goes, probably in 30 years.
What do you think about desalinization?
Well, I don't know, but in Crescent City, that'll never be a problem. It rains too much. But in, uh, in other places where they have problems, like in San Diego and Los Angeles, maybe at cheaper, and they don't want to use the rivers anymore for that, they use it for the fish and stuff, then that's probably what they're going to end up doing. But anyway, I thought you would like to know that the MBR is actually working very well. It's way ahead of schedule, and the plant is running well, and probably within six weeks, the contractor's going to be, uh, leaving. And, uh, so, I'm going to have a financial report coming up soon. I mention, I keep saying that, and I, I'm going to do that. Ken and I are getting ready to start working on that, so. Uh, Eric?
Thank you very much, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
You, uh, I'm hoping are going to go on a nice vacation after all is said and done. You deserve it.
Well, you don't want to run through this, uh, housing thing?
Yeah, just one more time. You guys didn't quite...
Probably not, can we not?
All right, so, as Rod said, we have been looking at the harbor for, well, the last year now, and trying to figure, figure, try to figure it out a way to make it happen. There are basically three things that need to happen. One, we need to make improvements to the harbor pre-treatment plant. Two, we need to connect them to the actual wastewater treatment plant. And then, third, we need to find out some way to fund it. So, first, we'll take a look at the existing harbor pre-treatment plant, and we'll kind of just run through just some, just what it is now, what we are planning to possibly take it to. This was, uh, this was flipped around when I originally drew it up. Let me see if I can flip it. Okay, so, we'll just look at this, uh, sideways for a second, apparently.
Maybe under view?
So, we can move on. Ah, possibly?
Rotate.
Yeah. There, much better, thank you. So, this is a very, uh, generic schematic of what the current harbor pre-treatment plant is. I drew this up shortly before the meeting, so, we'll just run through it. You basically have your fish processing plant, that flows into a first preliminary wet well. That is then pumped using above-ground pumps into a rotating screen, mechanical screen, and then flows into a second wet well. From there, it's pumped again to their tank. Gravity flows from the tank into a third wet well, where it's then pumped to basically our outfall. We share an outfall with the, with the harbor. This screen, when we looked at the actual screenings that it takes out, it's very minimal. It's about a five-gallon bucket per day, which is really nothing compared to the city's normal lift stations. So, looking at this system, looking at the existing controls, which are very antiquated right now, as well as the, the tank, it's, it's not in very good shape. So, what we are proposing to do is to basically eliminate two of the wet wells, eliminate the tank, eliminate the screen, just let the fish processing plant flow into the wet well. We're going to relocate their existing pumps, which currently pump into their, into the outfall, just put them in the first wet well, connect this wet well to the existing pressure main, and basically take it to the wastewater treatment plant.
Why would you remove the screen?
Well, it's, honestly, it's not doing a whole lot. You know, it's just a, it's five gallons worth of, worth of some of the, the other processes that, you know, that haven't been removed, and compared to a normal wet well, there's not a whole lot there. So, they will be responsible for screening within their plant. They will have to meet certain criteria, which Jim was talking about. And according to our tests, the sewage from the fish processing is very similar to normal sewage, as far as BODs and suspended salts. So, we will just turn this into, instead of a, really a pre-treatment plant, this will just be a normal lift station. So, that's...
Is that based on all the tests that we did last summer?
That's tests last summer, as well as, as tests that have been performed in the past. The other component to this is the controls component. So, our estimate, our estimation of this project is about, say, 30,000 for controls, it's about 10,000 in rehabbing the pumps, and it's about maybe 10,000 for the actual connection to the existing main. So, right around 50,000. And again, all these numbers are preliminary, but they do give us some sort of starting point for planning and, uh, trying to figure out what, exactly what we need to do. So, the other component, hooking it up to the wastewater treatment plant. This is an aerial photo, obviously, of Crescent City. You can see this black space here is the harbor pre-treatment plant. The purple line is their current force main, which comes across the harbor, goes on the Sunset Circle, loops around, comes down Howe Drive, and then hooks in right here where the palm is on the cursor, into our new outfall, the new 24-inch outfall. In order to hook it to the plant, what we would need to do is take this line at this point, disconnect it from the outfall, extend it down around the, the Howe Drive currently, connect it into B Street. That's about 730 lineal feet, a...
Can I ask why? I thought that when we originally, when you did this with us in our committee, that there was a point where it could actually go right into where it needed to be.
There is, there's that existing line, but I believe that, that basically takes a right right here and goes into the current wastewater treatment plant. So, I think a lot of that has been removed, so the best scenario would be to take it on around and actually hook it into this B Street manhole, and then it would flow into the treatment plant. So, that's what needs to happen there, a little bit simpler than what needs to happen at the pre-treatment plant. This is 730 feet at an estimated, you know, $100 a foot, which is probably a little high, that's about 73,000 to make that connection. So, the high estimate for total cost of this project is going to be right around 125,000. And again, these numbers are preliminary, but, but nonetheless, it's some sort of starting point. So, the third phase, how do you fund it? This actually came about on a completely different scenario and a completely different project. And I, I can't reiterate enough how preliminary this is, but we have had some discussions purely at the staff level, with the county, with the CSA, as well as with the harbor, and now, it's, it's kind of kicked back, and we need to really evaluate it from an engineering standpoint, now that everybody agrees this could be a win-win situation. The CSA currently has the Birch Ocean View portion, which the Elk Valley Rancheria would like to hook up to. If the Rancher, if the Rancheria hooks up, that's going to increase their sewer flows such that they're going to need to make improvements to each of their lift stations. You can see Elk Valley Lift Station is right here. This is where all of the sewage from Birch Ocean View flows into Elk Valley. This would need to be upgraded to approximately around 800 gallons per minute. It's currently at about four. If you follow that pressure main, which is in light blue here, it comes down, it falls the same path as the wastewater treatment into Sunset Circle, loops around, gets into Howe Drive, which it gravity flows from this manhole right here at Howe Drive to the wastewater treatment plant. This, uh, this line in Howe Drive is, is a gravity line, it's 10-inch, but it's very flat, so its capacity is somewhere around, say, 500, 550 gallons per minute. Not big enough to take the upgrade that Elk Valley was going to need. The harbor force main is a 12-inch force main, which can take quite a bit of capacity as far as sewage. So, the thought is to connect these two force mains right here, the Elk Valley 8-inch and the harbor 12-inch at this point in Sunset Circle. Use their force main to take it down around through Howe Drive, and then they would use the extension of this force main, and it would go into the treatment plant.
When you say "they"...
I say CSA. "They" is county, CSA, it's this, it's the sewer district out here in Birch Ocean View.
Okay. And what if...
So, they would pay for this portion here, they would, the, meaning they, the CSA, would pay for their connection into the harbor force main here. They would pay for the CSA's share of this, this line coming around, and that estimated share is about, say, 60%, 59% if you run the numbers. They could also, and this is, again, just completely preliminary, it's, they're going to be using some capacity within this harbor force main, the 12-inch force main, so there could be a capacity charge that could be charged to the CSA that could help fund these improvements, both here at the harbor pre-treatment, as well as, as the extension here to the treatment plant itself.
Do you have any rough estimates on any of those capacity charges?
Well, again, that would be up to the harbor or the CSA to come up with the final figures on those. But it could be enough possibly to fund for all of the improvements here at the harbor, as well as, as well as this extension there, that pressure main.
Bob, how does that play into the entire issue with Birch Ocean View and the Rancheria? Have you been a part of this, this conversation?
Uh, not really, but I think I can answer your question. Um, first of all, just to remind you, I'm, I've disqualified myself from advising the city, uh, as far as any legal issues that come up with respect to this. But, the Birch Ocean View Community Services District is not what's being discussed here. They're just simply water, strictly water.
Okay.
And so, the CSA is a county service area, which is actually run by the Board of Supervisors. So, they're the ones that are being dealt with here, and I'm sure they'll be, they'll be relatively easy to deal with, would be my guess.
But did you, like, I, I understand that. I thought I understood you say that the lift station belonged to Birch Ocean View.
No, it's in the Birch Ocean View area, I guess, is, is really what you call, it's the CSA, the county service area one is what it originally was. I think it's been all combined now.
Okay, so, all the lift stations are owned by either the city or the CSA?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, and again, this has not been discussed with the Board of Supervisors. It's merely just at a staff level at this time, as we're trying to find some way to, to fund both the improvements needed at the harbor pre-treatment plant, as well as try to help the CSA improve their lift stations and, and bring their sewage in. This just kind of popped out as a possible win-win situation.
How many gallons will be going through the system during a typical crab season on a daily basis?
We've looked at the flows over the last couple of years, and it looks like their max day is right around 116,000 to, you know, about 130,000, something like that.
It's very erratic, right? A lot of up and down?
It is very erratic.
It depends on whether they're processing or not.
Exactly, and so, that's, you know, per day, what we actually would get as an instantaneous flow is, is something different. They process not over 24 hours, but over eight hours. So, if you break it down into gallons per minute for what that lift station would see, you're over 200 gallons. Now, it, it has been talked about that, why don't they just hook into the, to the existing gravity system? If you look at Harbor Lift Station, which is right here, so, you, we talked about the purple line, that's their force main. That takes it from the pre-treatment directly to the, to the wastewater treatment plant outfall. There's also a, a secondary system, it's a gravity system, it's the lines in red that you can see, and they run into the harbor, they come out, then they go through the city's lift stations, it's called the Harbor Lift Station, because it's in the harbor. It's then pumped a short distance and then flows again around Sunset Circle, gets into this lift station here, which is Tetrapod. This then flows to Second Street, gravity flows down Second to the treatment plant. So, that's how the old system used to work. Harbor Lift Station is rated at 200 gallons per minute, Tetrapod is rated at 200 gallons per minute. And just glancing at the flows from the Harbor Pre-Treatment Plant, they're over 200 gallons per minute. So, that's, really isn't a feasible option. It would max out the lift station, causing us to make improvements, not only to the lift station, but some of these lines are 6-inch lines that it's running down, and a 6-inch line at the slope that it's at can't facilitate, you know, the 300 gallons a minute or whatever. We would need to take the current sewage plus the harbor pre-treatment.
If it's that simple, Eric, why didn't we know that when we determined what their flows were last summer?
It was, if, what's that simple?
That the 200, uh, gallons per, is it minute?
Mm-hmm.
At those two lift stations wouldn't handle...
That has always been the city's response to that. As far as just hooking them up to the...
Okay, but then, why did we talk about just dumping them right into the system that already exists? Because that's what I thought the plan was.
The pressure main.
Yeah.
Yes. So, that, that still is a scenario. This is their pressure main they're currently using. So, they would upgrade the, make the improvements that are necessary at the pre-treatment. It would go into this purple pipe and come around to the, to the wastewater treatment plant, still needing this extension.
Why, why wouldn't you still want them to remove, even if it's five gallons a day? That's five gallons that our sewer, wastewater treatment plant doesn't have to process, and that would be the responsibility of some screening, or maybe some more advanced screening. I mean...
If you go to the Harbor Pre-Treatment Plant and you look, it's, that screen is antiquated, and also, if you look at what that, what that actually entails, is, it has to flow into this wet well, and then it takes two more pumps then to pump it out of that well, wet well, into the screen.
Who pumps that? Is that the city doing that, or the harbor doing that?
Currently, right now, it's the harbor, but the thought is that the city would take over this. At least, that's what's being...
So, if the city takes over, it would minimize the two pumping, well, actually, three, three pumping?
If you want to keep the screens, yeah. So, currently, it takes six pumps to get it to the treatment plant. What we want to do is eliminate the screen, since it's really not that much, especially if you compare it to, you know, normal lift stations and, and what they pump out, and basically just reduce it to two pumps in a wet well, just a normal lift station.
So, maybe I'm thinking of this, the screen that you're talking about removing is something different. Am I thinking about the screen that they screen out all the crab?
No, they have screens within their fish processing plant.
Okay, okay.
They will still be required to screen in their processing plant.
Okay.
To get it to us, and that'll be part of their, their, uh, industrial discharge permit, which is that pre-treatment that Jim was talking about.
So, by eliminating four of the six pumps, that'll eliminate cost if we take it over?
Cost and maintenance, yes, because they're in...
And then, it'll just be a charge to the fish, fish processing plant?
For the industrial permit?
Based on a permit of so many gallons?
Yes.
And Eric, is it true that in, in the new wastewater treatment plant, five gallons of byproducts from the fish is negligible nearly in the big scheme of things?
These, this is just little tiny pieces of fish, just very, very fine. The, the screens they have inside their plant make it so that when it goes to the fine screen, it's just little, very fine pieces of fish in that...
Sushi.
It's su, yeah, exactly, so. And, and when we go through our plant, it really takes care of stuff like that very easily, so.
And it's not the shells or the, it's not the hard stuff that can't be digested?
All that is all screened out. This is very...
In the plant, in the plant.
In their fish plant, yes.
At 116 to 130 gallons per day, uh, what does that translate to in terms of single-family equivalent hookups?
When we looked at that, and it's, it's been last year since we looked at it, I think we looked at it on an annual basis, because it is very erratic, like, like Rod said, so you can't really base it on the 116,000 per day, but, and Jim and I were discussing this a little bit before the meeting, it's, it's somewhere around 20 single-family equivalents. and Jim and I were discussing this a little bit before the meeting, it's, it's somewhere around twenty single family equivalents.
So the biggest expense is getting the connection to the B Street manhole, is that right?
Yes, yeah.
So, and that's a hundred and twenty-five?
The, the total improvements would be right around.
Yeah, about seventy-five thousand would be the-
Seventy-three thousand.
So what cost will the fish processing plant bear on this? I mean, if we ask somebody right now to hook up, they would, we would charge them for a hookup. So what part of this are we gonna charge them because this is hooking up?
This, that comes down to more of a political decision. However, in the past, the city has, say, let's not think about it as a fish processing plant or in the, in the, the large scheme like that, just, just think of it as a house. If a house were built and then a house, say, burns down and it's vacant land for a while, then they build a new house. We don't require that new house to pay a connection fee because its grandfather didn't think, and at some point in time, the old house paid a connection fee, whether it was, you know, four hundred dollars or, or whatever it was, they were already hooked up. So one of the thoughts on this is that the fish processing plants, there were three of them at the time, were already hooked up to the sewer system. So it would be a similar situation.
But if, but along the same line, if a, if a house was built and it had a water hookup and it burnt down or whatever and it had to have a new main because it had an old clay pipe or a redwood sewer connection and you had to put in the new pipe, who would pay for that? The people building the house, I think.
Yeah, I mean, it's-
So I understand, and that's, I understand, but I also understand that they need to have some kind of a buy-in to this also.
I, yeah, I, I think there is buy-in from their end.
So I know it's not, I know it's preliminary and I know it's political-
It is, it is political and the, and the reason is because, um, for me, I want to protect seafood processing in our community. I want those full-time jobs, um, that are going to, um, help our community take care of our families. And so for me, I like the idea of making it work for the business.
Uh, Eric, is, is the, uh, with the, if the Elk Valley Rancheria project comes online, will this, uh, high capacity, was it the blue line?
Yeah, let me, let me try to find that.
Purple, I think.
It's a brown line. Sorry.
He couldn't resist.
And that's why I wanted to have this on the agenda tonight was because, um, it is about protecting jobs and, and ideally getting Alber to sign their contract more than a year with the Harbor and, um, you know, not just a year at a time, but a longer-term contract with the Harbor. So that's why I was interested in seeing if we could help facilitate that and, um, so that's, that was my interest in all of this. If we could assist the Harbor in their negotiation with Alber in signing a long-term contract. So, um, because I knew that our date had been pushed back with them, so that was my interest in all of this.
Well, let's not forget the rate payers too and that there's this expansion component that needs to be paid for. So we can't keep burdening the existing rate payers. Do we have any rough figures on what kind of monthly income would be generated off of Alber Seafoods?
Sounds like five, five thousand dollars a month was kind of the, the estimate that was based on Jim's work with Don Alber.
And again, these numbers are extremely preliminary at this point.
I understand. Do we have any figures on the capacity, uh, future hookups that our new upgraded system can handle ultimately?
Again, this was very rough, but when we did the, the rate study, I think the, the, I don't know if there'll actually be a per se number as there is now when this is all said and done, but somewhere right around a thousand was, was the, uh, was what came out in the rate study.
In other words, a thousand single family equivalent hookups?
Correct, and again, that's, that's not a hard number, but that was right about what we came up with when we looked at the different components and it's not, it's not that simple. You don't spend, you know, forty-three million dollars on a plant and come up with one number. There, there are many components that feed into that number and it won't take another forty-three to say bump that number up. It might just be a small component like the digesters or something like that. So as we move forward, that number will change and how the plant is operated and whatnot, that number can change as well.
Right, like a single-family residence could be, you know, a very small user versus a single-family residence that uses a lot more.
Correct.
Yeah.
So back to my, uh, question, i- is it the blue line that's the high-pressure capacity line?
The blue line here that you see is actually the Elk Valley. This is an eight-inch AC line. That is, that is very small for this, this lift station here which takes up the whole basin. The purple line is the twelve-inch line that comes from the fish processing plant. Currently, right now, the fish processing pumps that they're using are about five hundred and fifty gallons per minute. We're proposing to use those same pumps, just retrofit them, kinda rebuild them. So they're gonna be using roughly five hundred and fifty gallons per minute. We wanna upgrade Elk Valley to about eight hundred gallons a minute. So that's why the, if the CSA did, did go along with this, with this plan, they would actually pay slightly more, fifty-nine percent compared to, compared to the Harbor's forty-one.
With the Elk Valley Casino, uh, Expansion Convention, um, the Birch Ocean View is strictly water deal. What are they doing with the sewage when they finally get their stuff together?
That's why we're talking about ex, expanding this line because they will be using our sewer.
And so this ties into the, um, Carpenter's Union impact report saying the lift stations have to be upgraded. Is that correct?
I don't know about the Carpenter's Union's report, but the, the lift stations are being evaluated.
Okay, well, that was always part of the plan.
Yeah.
The question I was trying to ask is, basically you're piggybacking at that new intersection. And, uh, so that, uh, new line with the piggyback because the other line is inadequate. Will that service both the Harbor and the ultimate Elk Valley Rancheria development and whatever else is out in Birch Ocean View District?
Yes.
Thank you. So it seems to me that it's, it's a sensible, uh, resolution to, uh, kill two birds with one stone, so to speak. Uh, that it turns out to be a win-win, uh, for all the parties involved and, and it looks like it spreads the cost across different parties also.
I, I had two quick questions. One regarding timeline and two, um, was the CDBG grant funding, was it CDBG? The grant funding that we just, uh, applied for to help rebuild, not rebuild.
Oh, yeah, that's the CDBG over-the-counter grant.
The over-the-counter grant, thank you.
The building, the Alber-
Yeah, did that have any funding in it for any of this?
No, that's only, um, interior improvements to his processing building itself.
Okay, and then if, let's say you guys go talk with the county and get this approved, what kind of a timeline are we looking at?
You know, it's, it's hard to say, it, to actually speak for the county. Uh, Rod, do you wanna try and take that one?
That's really my big question for the council tonight. Um, we did have, we've already had one meeting where we had Jim, Eric, me, Rich Young, so Harbor was represented, Tina McClendon and a new engineer. It's not a new Art Reeve level person, I don't think, but so we've had that one meeting. We pitched this idea. There's been an initial positive reaction from county staff, but they want us to be, understandably want us to be cautious because they haven't taken it to the Board of Supervisors yet. If we're going to meet a timeline that is targeted at being up and running in time for crab season, we need to get the council's feeling tonight and direction tonight about are you willing to front city sewer enterprise funds to get this project moving while we're negotiating the details of the concept that Eric has presented tonight where the CSA basically pays the full one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, it's a, it's a little bit of a gamble and we want, we need to know-
What happened to the fifty-nine percent?
Well, if the CSA doesn't buy into it, then they're not gonna pay the fifty-nine percent. So if, you know, if they don't get approval from their board to do this.
I mean, what's the, what, he's saying fifty-nine, you're saying a hundred.
If-
Yeah, under, under Eric's plan, and you may wanna walk him through this one more time, the bottom line is the county, CSA would end up paying the entire cost because they would, in addition to what they're paying, their share that they're paying, they would be buying capacity from the Harbor. And we take those two things combined, it would total that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar, and that's a high end.
So how do you get your fifty-nine percent then?
So fifty-nine, so this is, again, I can't stress how preliminary all these numbers are and that even the fact we're having this conversation at, at this level of detail is, is very preliminary, both because the CSA is not here, the board hasn't bought in, we just pitched it to the Harbor, you know, a few weeks ago. We're trying to work out the details because the one piece that was really missing with hooking up the Harbor and doing the upgrades and the city taking the Harbor, the Harbor fish waste is how to fund it. So this helps with that piece. So, you know, we're, we're moving ahead, but this is very preliminary.
Yeah, well, I think you're gonna get, well, I'm hoping, but, I mean, my initial, um, discussions with the board, you know, a few of them has been positive. They, they really want seafood processing to continue.
It's preliminary, not only politically, but also engineering.
Right.
So, so I know Stover, the, the Harbor has talked with Stover to take a look at it from their interest. We're working with, with Mike Young also to kinda glance at this and just do a double check on some of these numbers from the engineering standpoint. So it's, it's preliminary on both sides of the battle. Uh, this spreadsheet, spreadsheet basically is from the CSA's perspective on some of the upgrades that might have to happen for the Rancheria project. The last, basically the last three, I guess, have to do with what we're talking about tonight. So the one is the extending the, the pressure main in Howe Drive to B Street in which you can see the fifty-nine percent too, and I say B O V, really that's C O, that's really CSA, not to confuse you. But, you know, it's, it's the Birch Ocean View District, so, yeah, I'll just, uh-
It's okay, I got you. It's location.
Okay, yes, it's the location of where it's at. So, and this is the CSA's share. So that's seven hundred and thirty millimeter feet at a hundred dollars a foot. If you take their fifty-nine, that's what they would pay. The remainder would need to be paid by the Harbor for that. The Harbor upgrades, as we've talked about, are about fifty thousand dollars. So if you look at a capacity charge that Birch Ocean View might pay, they could pay somewhere around, you know, this eighty-eight or ninety thousand, hence they would pay for the improvements that are needed at the Harbor.
And what has the Harbor said?
Again, you know, in preliminary discussions, they have, uh, they have a few concerns, just that we wanna make sure that we're looking at the big picture of what the total Harbor build-out's gonna be, make sure we look at the capacity in the line. Uh, there's a few other points in, in the latter.
Yeah, yeah, one thing that, uh, Rich Young has done that I think is really good over the last week or so, he put together a one-page manifesto, I guess if you can have a one-page manifesto, and he's getting the focus off of just Alber Seafoods and looking more at what is the Harbor, what kinda capacity does the Harbor really need long-term, which I think is really smart. And he's asked, uh, Ward Stover to look at that question for them so that we can not just solve this immediate problem of this one seafood plant, but make sure that they've got the kinda capacity they need for growth that they may have down the road in the Harbor area. Um, and in specific, in answer to your question, I think Rich is, once Eric walked him through the technical details of it and of course, if we can make this happen to where they are not having to expend any money on the Harbor side, they're very supportive of it.
So he's, he's thinking the whole master plan development?
Yeah, he's just wanting to make, to make sure that we don't lose sight of that in all this.
And we could, we could accommodate, have you looked at the master plan for the Harbor? And it looks like we could accommodate their vision of a master plan with what we're, what-
Yeah, what Eric looked at specifically today was, uh, because there's this constant talk about maybe we can bring another seafood processor in and maybe we could even get to three seafood processors. So Eric ran some quick numbers with Rich Young today which seemed to indicate that you could support not only Alber, but at least one and probably two additional similarly-sized seafood processing businesses based on what's there, or, well, based on these improvements being made. We didn't look into, you know, let's say they get a hotel and two more restaurants and we didn't, uh, do a lot of detailed analysis of that full master plan build-out.
But that is one thing nice about using the existing pressure main and not putting the sewage into the existing gravity system is that that gravity system would still have some capacity to take, you know, restaurant or other type of development of that nature.
So if all is well in the world and the Harbor and the CSA and the Board of Supervisors all lay their cards on the table and say, let's go for it, what's the timeline?
Minimum ninety days.
So the question I have there i- is, uh, is there a, a potential of jeopardizing the Alber seafood processing for this coming crab season? Because it does seem like it's getting time-sensitive and it seems like there's a bunch of hurdles to get over in the next ninety days or something and it seems like that would really-
And I can't imagine it happening in ninety days if, I mean, do you have to do an EIR?
I doubt we'd have to do an EIR on, on this.
Why not?
Well, really, there's-
You're building line, right?
No, well, it'd basically be in the existing roadway, so you can almost get a categorical exemption for that.
Okay, well, so you think. We got appealed-
Theoretically.
If we're taking a leap of faith, I would hope that Mr. Alber would too. I don't know.
In terms of maybe-
I'm willing to take a leap of faith if he will.
In terms of what?
We'll all sign at the same time.
In terms of maybe contributing financially or just, just basically trusting that we'll, that we'll get it done. I don't think that the whole crab season would be jeopardized. I think you could see a scenario where maybe they fire up the old plant at the Harbor for two or four weeks of the crab season.
December one crab season?
November fifteenth is what Rich Young says is the official start date.
It never starts-
Since when? That's the, that's the start date, not in our area.
Yeah.
That's like in San Francisco.
Yeah.
Our, our start date is always December first.
Or December fifteenth.
They never agree on the prices, so.
San Francisco is November.
Yeah. It's December first here, but he, I think, wanted to be able to process his San Francisco crab up here earlier.
Okay, yeah, that may be what they were-
Which is why we needed to have it up and running by September-ish or October.
Well, he's also looking to expand the business to do, uh, what, whiting and-
Reet, yeah, whiting, yeah.
Something else.
That's after crab season, though.
I- is his contract, uh, in suspension in the meantime?
It always has been. I don't think they'll ever sign one.
His lease, yes.
Yeah, no, he's not signed a, a new lease yet.
He has no reason to.
Right.
Well, he's, he has a, he has a lease through June thirtieth. He signed an extension just about three or four months ago.
And then, uh, uh, I think a final question I have is, uh, apparently the Carpenter's Union is taking, or proposing to take some action. Uh, could that end up buggering things up?
The Carpenter's Union was on the Elk Valley, um, project, not this one.
Okay.
So what is the-
This is kind of an update tonight with no, with nothing but some really raw figures. Do you want action tonight? Is that what you're looking for?
Kinda sounds like it, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to get some direction from the council on whether you are okay with fronting- Yeah, I'd like to get some direction from the council on whether you are okay with fronting city funds. It would be sewer enterprise funds to get this started while these negotiations are going on with the harbor and the CSA.
I'm not sure I'm comfortable with fronting money until there's an agreement. I, I think if there's an agreement and we need to front some money until whatever the agreement says takes place, I'm fine with that. But not, not having any kind of indication that, yes, we are going to participate in this project, I wouldn't, I wouldn't front our money unless there's, you have a backup plan on how it's going to get repaid.
Yeah.
I agree with Kelly.
Yeah, and I think that's the wisest thing, except that I need you to have staffs back when folks start freaking out about we're not going to be up and running by the start of crab season.
Well, to be honest, staff didn't get this done in time, like we were supposed to. So we're stuck now.
Yeah, that's the key component.
That, well, that's my, that's my point, because if you front money, there's no impetus on anybody to kick in. Why, why would I? Why would I?
Right. No, I agree.
See, it's going to buy, pay for it. They kicked in already. I don't have to do anything.
If, I'm, I'm being serious, because I want this to move forward more than anybody, probably. But I think if there's a plan and we were going to be a percentage of that plan and needed to provide the other upfront money, but had some contract that that was going to be repaid, I'd be fine with that. But you can't come to us and say, front some money for a deal that we don't know is going to work.
If you can, if you can come to a deal and you can get people to sign without them having the funds right now, I don't, like, I don't have a problem fronting it, knowing we're going to get X, Y from, you know, A and B.
Right.
I don't have a problem with that.
What about if we say we're willing to front the money if the county is willing to do so? Would that work?
Willing to do so what?
Willing to, with the cap, the.
Participate.
Participate.
With the.
You mean reimburse the whole project's cost?
Well, I want, I want the CSA to step in and say, okay, we're going to upgrade the lift station on Elk Valley. We agree to do that. All I need's a, for Jay and Rod and Jim or Eric to sit down, and I, they can sign it on a napkin as far as I'm concerned, but let them agree to do that. And, and Albert's, let them agree to do whatever part they want to do, and then I don't mind that, but I want some agreement first. And I think, you know, obviously, this, I understand that the estimates are just that, plus or minus fifty percent.
There you go.
Eric feels much better now.
But I don't, but I don't, I have a hard time, because then we have no bargaining.
Sure.
No, we have nothing.
Yeah, I think that's the wise choice.
I mean, why, can you guys sit down with them this week? I mean, we can have a special meeting for ten minutes to give, you know, take action.
I'm certain they want to do that. If, if the county's willing to make an agreement with the CSA.
I think what the council's saying is it's a, a top priority. We just need more information. We need a partner.
I think we ought to direct staff to go get what agreements they can, and if we need to have a special meeting by July fifth, have it. I'm willing to meet next week, you know? All you need to do is notice it. Pardon?
I'm willing to meet tomorrow.
Well, as long as we can notice it, but.
Right.
We need some agreements and some, but I do appreciate all the work that's already gone on. I mean, this is, this has taken some thought and some.
This is the kind of planning we need to be doing.
Right. Okay. That makes sense?
Okay. Public comment, Mr. Miles. Can you make it quick, please?
Yeah, Kelly.
Thank you, Richard.
First thing, you need Albert to sign an agreement that he will not process popcorn shrimp, because the reality is, and I don't want to sound like the man from BP, is that.
That spot's taken.
The price of shrimp, because of the tragedy in the golf course, will go up. And you're not going to tell these fishermen around here, if they can make a buck, they won't drag for shrimp again. But if you start taking shrimp.
The, the industrial permit will not include shrimp.
And you need to make Albert sign on the dotted line to that agreement.
He has to.
Well, that's where this ordinance comes in. Secondly, I want to sound like Mike Scabuzzo.
Oh, yay.
Yay. Kelly, ever heard of a flow meter? No, don't laugh. Donna's right about this. Don't put the burden on the ratepayer. Because if you do this favor for Albert's, I hate to say this, I'll be the first one to vote yes on our rollback. The problem is, we got the Indians that want the casino. We need that growth. We got the customers out in Birch Track. You talked here about housing for this community. One of these days, you may want to annex Birch Track, because there's land out there that you can build on. The reality is, you got to figure a way to pay for all of this, because if you keep stealing, and that's what it is, from your sewer fund, you're never going to pay off the loan that you're indebtedness into. And I'm serious, Kelly. If you want to run for reelection and you don't figure out a way to pay for this, people will vote against you.
Thank you, Richard. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comments.
Any legislative?
Legislative matters this evening?
No, mayor, not tonight.
Okay. Reports concerning referrals, Mr. Slur.
I attended, with my colleague, Ms. Murray, the IGRC last week, and the Elk Valley Rancheria ad hoc committee meetings. That's all.
Catherine?
I attended the IGRC, and that's it.
Didn't you attend RTC?
Oh, that's correct. RTC and LTIC also.
Transportation, I forget, and our senior center board meeting was canceled.
Okay. Donna?
Yeah, several things. I attended the Kappa Coalition before coming to this meeting. That's the Community Action Prevention Alliance. It's concerned with alcohol, tobacco, and other drug prevention stuff. And we were discussing the issues of marijuana, medical marijuana, collectives, dispensaries, and things like that. And they were making plans on what to do next, whether have a town hall meeting or have further input as to where to go, because we definitely need to start addressing some codes and ordinances on this subject. Couple concerns, police chief Black, constituent complained about smokers at the courthouse, talking to one of your officers to police ticket them, and he was ignored.
Could you say that again? You're talking so fast, I don't understand you.
I'm just in a hurry to get out. Sorry. Constituent made a complaint about people smoking at the doors of the courthouse. This guy went over to a police officer and asked them to police ticket them, and he was ignored. Also, there were several thefts in the Gainard Street neighborhood, about the thirteen, fourteen-hundred block. I don't know if you got reports on that, but I know of three households that had major thefts. The same gal I met with also want to know if we can bring back burn bins. I guess that's a Steve Wakefield question. And she wants to know if there will be porta-potties at the beach for July fourth fireworks.
Donna, what are you looking for? Because these are issues you would need to direct, or talk to Mr. Butler about. So are you looking for?
Just one more concern.
Information or?
The Delnort, yes, looking for information to give this woman some answers. Delnort Solid Waste, another constituent said that a company that could save ratepayers a hundred-and-twenty dollars a year, why couldn't the others do that? So I just bring that up.
I can answer that.
Okay. And one last constituent said, for a hundred-and-fifty thousand, it was spent for the visitors bureau. We could have bought a lot of park benches, waste receptacle, and flowering baskets to make our city more attractive. And that's it. Thank you.
Regarding the Delnort Solid Waste Management Authority's latest contract, I sat on the ad hoc committee, I'll just give you an executive summary. The ad hoc committee recommended Hambro as the number-one company to negotiate with. We recommended Recology as number-two, and Solid Waste of Willets as number-three. The Solid Waste of Willets was the lowest rate for residential customers. However, the reason they were able to offer that lower rate is because they planned to take all of the recycling out of the area, which would have affected jobs and local business, would have gone out of business, basically.
That sounds good.
And so we decided that the number-one and number-two were local companies that we wanted to move forward with.
And Tommy Sparrow does a good job, I understand. But there was one more thing that was brought up, and that is that if they get all this recycling material free, couldn't they refund or rebate or do something for the ratepayers at the end? So, one more thing to consider.
Well, actually, Mr. Sparrow's company currently takes all of its recycling to Jalindra Recycling, who then offers the recycling center to the community, and it's a payback center. So our community, are you listening?
Yes.
Okay. Our community members can use that service to receive refunds for the recycling. Mr. Burns?
I don't have anything tonight.
I just wanted to remind everybody that this Saturday is Sweets by the Sea, which is a fundraiser for our pool. So it'd be great to have your support there. It starts at five-thirty PM on Saturday night. It's being catered by Northwoods and Vita Caccina and Alyssa's Custom Coffee. And the funds, I believe there's probably an auction as well. I believe Mr. Butler's going to be a, what do you?
I'm a spotter.
A spotter? Yeah. So I want to say thank you to Pop for putting on this event, and hopefully it'll be a great turnout. And then also, we won't be back here until after the Fourth of July, so just wanted to wish everybody a wonderful Independence Day and be safe and.
Have a ride. Have a ride.
Oh, yeah, actually, the same thing as last year, well, the mayor will be in the convertible with Chair Hemmingson. But for the other four of you, we can line up that same fire rescue vehicle if you're interested.
I'd actually given everybody a copy, so if they wanted to do their own thing, they could. But Mr. Burns asked that I make sure that the fire truck was available, so I, I met with Rod two weeks ago and.
Yeah, Steve Wakefield is fine with that. We'll get you a, a time to show up. Maybe a few days before Fourth of July, we'll get that to you.
Oh, I think a couple of days before Fourth of July, show up.
No, yeah.
I don't think so.
A little early.
And our next meeting is July sixth.
Tuesday. Don't forget to say Tuesday.
Our meeting will not be Monday, but it'll be Tuesday, July sixth, at five PM. Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Jim, Kelly, Kelly had liked some water.